Good evening, everyone. Happy Thursday and happy Black History Month. I would like to welcome everyone and call the regular meeting of the Lansing Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Boyer.
Present.
Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Mr. Hurd. Mr. Lopez. Mrs. Moore.
Present.
Dr. Nebarz Martinez.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Mrs. Strode.
Present.
Ms. Williams. Quorum is present.
Thank you, and I am aware of Trustee Hurd's absence for tonight. Could I have a volunteer for the reading of the district mission statement, please?
My president.
Thank you, Trustee Kavanaugh.
The mission of the Lansing School District is to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives.
Thank you. Are there any additions to this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any public comments on agenda items? Alrighty, seeing none. At this time, we're going to have a presentation of 98B student data report from Jessica Benavides. And... And who? Anna DiPonio, welcome.
Thank you.
Anna DiPonio, thank you. Did I say her name? Okay, welcome. Alrighty.
Can you control the clicker? Ooh, I get to control the clock. Well, thank you, everyone, for having us here this evening. I'm here with Anna DiPonio, our Director of Data and Accountability. And we are here tonight to present to you our winter assessment review. This is something we've been doing for several years now. As you might remember, we've called it the 98B report. That is actually old legislation that is actually still in effect. But we thought that it is just really important to be transparent around how our students are doing academically, and so we've really chosen to carry this on as a tradition here after our winter assessments to give you a sense of how our student achievement is in the Lansing School District. So hopefully, we have some good information for you, and if you have questions, just please let us know. We have planned three sections for you tonight. We have a review of our winter assessment data. We will also go over our partnership 18-month benchmark for you. And then we will also go over the Stanford and Harvard study that has just come out in the growth after and before the pandemic. So we hope this will give you a good view of where our district stands currently. And without further ado, I will turn it over to my wonderful counterpart.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think Jessica did a great job of explaining to you our 98B presentation. We present it twice a year, once in the winter and then once in the spring, so this is our winter presentation. But I don't want to get right into the data yet until I go over who are our students that are actually taking these assessments. So we have a total enrollment of 9,904 students. Our two key groups are multilingual learners and students with IEPs. So our students with IEPs make up 23.63% of the 9,904, and our multilingual learners make up about 17, a little over 17%. Going over to our pie graph with our race and ethnicity, our two largest groups are African-American students, our white students, and our Hispanic students. Our African-American students make up 39% of our total enrollment. Our white students and our Hispanic students each make up about 21% of our total enrollment. And then we have students that identify with, as two or more race or ethnicities, that's 13%. We have 6% of our students are Asian, and we have two groups that are less, that make up less than 1% of our population, and that's our Pacific Islander and our Native American. So these are our students that are taking the NWEA assessment. We give them to, we give our assessment to all grades, kindergarten through 12th, and we give that assessment three times a year, once in the fall, once in the winter, and then once in the spring. For purposes of this presentation, we're going to go over our winter data. I want to go over a little bit about what NWEA is, and before we get into the data, it's nationally normed. So what we say is, a student receives a RIT score in both reading and math, because that's what they take the NWEA MAP growth in, those two subject areas, reading and math. Like I said, both kindergarten through 12th grade, those are all grade levels that they take the assessment in. They receive a RIT score, and that RIT score helps indicate where the student is performing academically based on other students and their grade level nationally. So let me give you an example. If a third grader at Guyer Park takes the assessment, that RIT score will actually show the national average of other third-grade students across the country. It puts them in a percentile. If they are in, within the 61st percentile or higher, they are considered proficient. If they are lower than the 61st percentile, they are considered not proficient. We also use NWEA to measure MET growth. So in the fall, we collect baseline data. What score did the student achieve in the fall? And then we use that score to determine how much growth they should make from fall to winter, and then also how much growth they should make from fall to spring. So in terms of this presentation, this winter 98B presentation, we're talking when we say MET growth, have they met their growth goal from fall to winter? I mentioned too, before I move on, that we take this three times a year. So we pretty much collect proficiency and MET growth data at all three times, fall, winter, and spring. But like I said, in the fall, we're collecting the baseline data. In the winter, we're digging a little bit deeper. So I mentioned, we're collecting, did they meet their MET growth goal from fall to winter? That's one piece of data that we're collecting. We're also collecting, have they met proficiency? That's another piece of data that we're collecting. Another piece of data that we're collecting is, NWEA is a predictor of how they will perform on their state standardized tests, tests like the MSEP, the PSAT, the SAT. We look at that data to determine how we think that they will perform on those tests. And then also NWEA, and this will help when we start to analyze the data for proficiency and MET growth, NWEA, once the student takes the assessment, it actually gives a report that's tailored to the student, to the individual student, based off of how the student answers their questions, whether they answer it correct or they answer it incorrect. It gives us a report on what areas of strength that student has, what standards that student has mastered, and what areas of weakness or what areas of growth that student still needs to master, what skills, what standards that student still needs to master. So that's what the NWEA tells us, and then again, they take it in the spring, and again, we're looking for MET growth and we're looking for proficiency. I think I've covered this slide mostly, in this presentation, we're going to cover proficiency levels, we're going to cover if our students are meeting MET growth. We're looking if, we're closing the achievement gap, if our students are at grade level, if they're meeting the expected growth that they should be meeting. And we're going to use comparative data by grade level. So when we, the next slides that I'll show you, when we start talking about proficiency and MET growth, it's actually by grade. We're not comparing by cohort, which means, for example, we're comparing last year's second grade to this year's second grade. We're not, we're not following students from first grade to second grade to third grade.
So one thing I'd just like to reiterate around MET growth and proficiency is, a student can have MET growth but not be proficient. So just to kind of make sure that that's clarified. So a student can grow and make the normed growth that they should be making, but that does not mean that they are necessarily proficient. So as we go through there, those will be the two metrics that we'll be looking at.
And I thank Jessica for bringing that up, because actually, a tier-three and a tier-two student, you will see, actually has a lot of room to grow, to meet proficiency. So you'll see typically in those areas or those students, more growth than you would typically see for a tier-one. It doesn't mean a tier-one doesn't grow, it just means that they have more room to grow. So let's start digging into the data. We're going to start with reading proficiency. The next couple of slides are just going to talk about proficiency for grades K through 12. A student is considered to be proficient, like I said, if they fall within the 61st percentile or higher. This year, I wanted to start out by saying, we got together as a group in the Office of Schools, and we really started talking about, what do we want our students to achieve this year? How, academically, what, how successful or where, what successes do we want to see from them? And one of the things that we talked about was proficiency. We wanted to see an increase in proficiency. We had seen increases in growth, but we had not seen as much in proficiency, and we wanted to see that this, this was the year. What supports could we put in place? What options or tutoring options could we give them? We really wanted to see what we could do for proficiency. So as you can, if you look at the graph up there, we are increasing in proficiency. If you look at the high school grades, 9, 10, and 11, you can see that there has been some, some big gains between those grades in proficiency from last year, so last year's ninth graders compared to this year's ninth graders. The same thing if I move over to the next slide for reading, I'm sorry, for math proficiency. You're starting to see growth in both math and reading in proficiency in grades K through 12. Having said that, because that was our focus, I also want to say, one of our other focuses this year was math. We realized that our students were falling behind in math. So we really wanted to give them additional supports. And some things that we've done is, we've been very, very intentional about putting tutoring into the schools, into all schools at all grade levels. But we've also taken, like I mentioned, the NWEA report that's tailored to students that talks about their strengths and their areas of growth. We've used that report to tailor it to a student, to actually maybe during school or after school, additional supports, tutoring, mentorships. We have, we are piloting a math program this year, hoping that that will adapt it for next year. We have really been intentional about really providing some really robust instruction and rigorous instruction around math.
I do also want to point out that in the area of reading and math statewide, the average for proficiency is anywhere between about 34 and 42-ish percent. So when we do look at these numbers, if we are striving to be at the state average, that's, those are the numbers that we're looking at, would be anywhere between about 35 and 42%. So as people look at this, of course, we'd like 100% of our kids to be proficient, but as we're looking about the metric of the test for MSEP, because this is a predictor for MSEP, I just want people to keep that kind of in mind.
Our next couple of slides are reading and math MET growth. So have our students reached their growth goal? That's what these slides are telling us in grades K through 12. There are a couple of things that I need to mention on this slide. So we talked before about, a student can show growth but not show proficiency. A student can also show proficiency but actually be slowing down or plateauing in their growth goal. And if you look at grades 2, 3, and 4, compared to last year's grades 2, 3, and 4, you'll see that there's a little bit of a decrease in these students meeting their growth goal. We know that in January of 2023, we implemented a new phonics program for grades K1 and 2 at that time. That happens to be our 2, 3, and 4 grade now. They actually, if I went back to the slide with reading proficiency, you'll see that they're increasing in reading proficiency, but they're not making as much growth. If I were to have gone and shown you data from 2022, they were showing growth, they were showing increase in growth. So what I'm saying is, the closer sometimes a student gets to proficiency, that 61st percentile or higher, they might not show as much growth. And in grades 2, 3, and 4, that's what we're seeing here. We're seeing an increase in proficiency. We're closing the gap. They're, they're reaching that grade level, but they're actually starting to slow in growth. This is a conversation now, based on this data and looking at it and analyzing it, this is a conversation that we are going to start having with our principals, and they're going to start having with their teachers. How can we keep the growth going, the growth momentum going, as well as stay on track in increasing proficiency?
Yeah, the bands are really interesting when you start to look at NWEA, because the reports that we get for student profiles will show us students, and they're colored from red to yellow, orange, green, so forth and so on. And where we are seeing the largest amounts of growth are between our red, basically our lowest-performing students are showing the most growth. What we are seeing this year, though, because a huge focus of ours, and I know it's been a topic of conversation here at the board even, is the students that we are calling bubble students, or the students that are on that cusp of proficiency. And we are seeing that the things that we're putting in place are moving those students forward, but what we are also seeing for is a real need for our program, like gifted and talented. So that's something that we are looking into, because one of the things that we want to make sure is, it's wonderful that our students are proficient, but they need to keep growing. Otherwise, we, their scores are the ones that will stagnate, and then we will still see movement of the ones in our, in the lower levels of performance, but we also need to make sure that we're closing the achievement gap for those students to then become proficient. So it's kind of a twofold thing that we're looking at within this data, and I know these charts don't show that, but that's the behind-the-scenes data that we're really looking at, to make sure that we're meeting each of the students at each of the levels, to make sure that each student is meeting their growth and not plateauing once they become proficient.
The next slide, it talks about math MET growth. Have our, how many students of our, how many of our students have met their growth goal from fall to winter in math? You'll see that for, across all grade levels, it's over 50% of our students on average are meeting their growth from fall to winter. Again, I can't stress enough how much we have really tried this year academically to really talk to, to really increase academic performance in terms of math. We know that our students were deficient in some standards, and we know that we needed to put academic supports in place for that. The next couple of slides are as a district, and these slides are over a span of three school years instead of two. But I do want to direct you to the title. It talks about grades 2 through 12, not grades K through 12. And there, there's a reason for that. In the school year 2223, our kindergarten and first grade did not take the NWEA. So if we were to have given you a comparison of grades K through 12, it would not have been an accurate comparison. What we did is, we just took the K1 out, and now we've just given you a comparison of grades 2 through 12. This slide shows both proficiency as a district and our students meeting MET growth as a district. You'll see that in school year 2223, 15.9% of our students were proficient, and then we've bumped up this year in winter to 20.9% proficiency. We'll also notice on the right that our students have met growth, 48.96% in school year 2223. This winter, our students, on average, 49.70% have met their growth goal from fall to winter.
So just to kind of set some parameters of what our overall, at least, beginning goals are for proficiency, again, our goal is to be at the state average minimally, right? So we are looking that we are, first step of achievement is to be in that 35 to 42-ish range. And when I say a range, it's because at each grade level, there's a different state average. And then, of course, for MET growth, the goal that we are striving toward is 80% of our students will have MET growth, and that's really based on the RTI model, because we know that 80% of students should be able to achieve using tier-one strategies and our curriculum. So just to know kind of where we're headed and what, what we're looking forward to, to meeting in the future.
This next slide is a comparison for our winter math proficiency and our winter MET growth. In school year 2223, our students were on average 9.12% proficient. This winter, we're showing a proficiency of 17.50%. We've also, if we look at the growth, on the right-hand side, 51.15% of our students met their growth goal in school year 2223. 55.55% of our students met their growth goal in 2324, and this winter, 2425, 57.90% have met their math.
Math has been an area that we've really struggled in the district for many, many years. So for me, though I'm not satisfied with 17.5%, not even for, you know, a long shot, I am really happy to start seeing those numbers move. To go from 9 to 17.5 just within two years is really pretty incredible, and I think we need to really pat on our back, our educators that are really taking that deep dive toward math education. The other thing that we need to really focus on too is, math is something that takes a lot of skill to teach, right? Because it skill builds, it is not an easy concept necessarily for students to grasp, and they need a really wonderful educator in front of them to do that work. And so even with having people that this is career, second career, or having long-term subs in classrooms and different things, we are really pleased to see this type of growth, and we're hoping with the type of instructional coaching, supports, and robust curriculum, that this will just keep increasing.
So we've talked about growth by grade level, now let's look at growth by school. We'll notice that, we're starting with reading proficiency, and the next slide will be math proficiency, so we're starting with proficiency. On average, as a district, 5% more of our Lansing students have met proficiency during this school year 2425 than the 2324 school year. So what does 5% really look like? That's 476 students. That's the 5%.
It's bigger than some of our schools. So we're really excited to see that, that data point this year.
If you look at that, there are some bars that look like there's a pretty big increase in proficiency. And so let me point out some schools, like Capital Area, Lansing Tech, The Learning Hub. Let me explain a couple of things. Lansing Tech had one grade level last year, now they have two grade levels. The more students that test, the more students can be proficient. So that's a small, we've gone from a small testing sample size to a larger one. Same thing with Learning Hub and Capital Area. Those enrollment numbers are increasing in our online schools, so therefore, we're having more students testing and more students are proficient. And then we also, I also have to point out, Mount Hope, that, that has not shown an increase in proficiency, and we are working with that school about that. Same thing with, oh, I'm sorry, I was jumping ahead of myself. So we broke down reading proficiency by gender. The dark blue are students that are not proficient, and the light blue shows students that are proficient. So when we look at the difference between male and female, our female students, in terms of reading proficiency, are scoring higher than our male students. Moving on to math proficiency, so on average, we were higher by 5% for reading proficiency. On average, for math proficiency, 4% more of Lansing students met their growth, they met their math proficiency this year, 2425, compared to last school year, 2324. So if we break down that 4%, that would be 385 students, that's what that 4% looks like. Again, as you can look, Lansing Tech, The Learning Hub, Capital Area, it looks like they're making great increases in proficiency. But I also want to point out Post Oak. You'll see that there's a pretty large gain there. They have been very intentional about bringing in a, bringing in and having someone train their teachers on instructional coaching methods that can, instructional methods that can be done in the classroom, whether in a small group, whether one-on-one. They have really focused on that this year, so that might be something that's helping to move that needle as well. Again, looking at it by gender, now, instead of the females having the higher proficiency level, the males in terms of math proficiency are higher than our females. They're 18.56% proficient compared to 16.23%. Looking at our MET growth in terms of, by school, and this is reading, we're seeing that there is growth within the schools. As a district, we've made a little bit of growth, like I mentioned on the slide a little bit ago. We do have some schools that are showing some pretty big increases in growth, like Atwood, Capital Area again, The Learning Hub again. There are, there are schools that are meeting growth, but again, I just want to point out, the closer we get to proficiency, sometimes we don't see the growth that we expect. Same thing with math. We are seeing, like I said, we were intentional about focusing on math this year, so we're seeing growth in math. And again, we can look at some schools that have made some gains in math, like Luton, Post Oak again, Eastern has made some pretty good gains in math, so has Willow and Guyer Park.
So one thing I do want to say is, was we're looking through these slides, it's like, oh, this school, and this school, and this school, right? So we're looking at the data. However, I think it's important to kind of peel back the layers and then say, well, what are we doing with this data? Right? Because data is great to admire and look at and say, oh, this is up, this is down. But what, what you don't see is that we do meet every month with our principals, actually a couple times a month, depending on the department, to really look at really student by student by student. So what this could mean is, I might only be one point off from my MET growth, so I have a much different need than, say, Anna, that might be off by 13 points, right? So that looks different when you start to look student by student. Then it also helps us to understand, is this a student that would be really wonderful candidate for tutoring, for Saturday School? Do they need an advanced math class? There's so many different things that we need to look at, but this is really just an overview of all of the data, but the important work really is done at the school level as they look student by student in their classrooms, and then really figure out what are the needs, the holes, and the standards that they're missing? What are areas that we need to beef up as a district? Are there certain standards that every fourth grader is more deficient on? Then we need to look at the curriculum. How is it being taught? Who's teaching it well? Those kinds of things. So I just want to shed some light on that, because it's really great to admire data, but unless we're doing something with it and we have an action plan, then there's really, what's the use in looking at the data other than to say, oh, here we are, right? It's really kid-dependent, student by student.
And Jessica made a great segue into the next one, what's our plan for improvement? So we really want to strengthen our tier-one instruction, but I really want to say this, when we talk about our students, we, we believe all students can achieve academic success. And so we all, we treat them as Gen Ed students, and then we give them the supports that they need. And then if they have an IEP, we go in, we dive deeper into the IEP and look what, 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 what's in their IEP. But we all think that they can achieve academic success. We do know that we have to incorporate supports, and so when we look at NWEA, and I'm mentioning NWEA because the 98B is predominantly about NWEA, that actually gives us great reports, great data on where our students are and what we need, what we need to do to help them move that needle, whether it's proficiency, whether it's meet MET growth. We do have, this year, we've been very, very, very intentional about training our principals and continuing to train our principals on strengthening teacher feedback. So feedback to us looks like being in classrooms, talking to them about their instructional practices, making sure that the pacing guide is being used, making sure that the curriculum is being used to fidelity. We do have new curriculum for ELA. We, as I mentioned, are piloting math curriculum, so hopefully, we'll have new math curriculum for next year as well. But these principals are actually being coached on how to have these conversations to help our teachers grow in their practice and help strengthen our students' academic success. We are continually collecting data, and like Jessica mentioned, she is meeting with the principals monthly. They are talking to her about their data, they're talking to her about how they're using their data to help inform and drive their instructional decisions, how they're talking, they inform her how they're talking to their staff about the data, and how they're digging into that data to help their students, and how to provide resources that their students need that we didn't think about. So we're continually looking at data. We're collecting data from surveys that we give to students, to parents, to staff, to help us become better. We are, I mentioned that we have the new curriculum for ELA, and we're piloting math curriculum. We are continually training our staff and looking for any other supports that we can give them to help our students. give them to help our students grow.
Yeah, one of the things I'm most proud of is that we've just been really consistent. Right? That's what takes the time, is I think a lot of times when we don't see results right away, we're quick to abandon things or say, oh, we need to change this and do something different. We know that this works. We know that having high-quality curriculum in front of students, being taught on grade level, focusing on teacher preparation, focusing on collegiality, looking at data, using what we call PLCs, which is where teachers get together by grade level and look at data to talk about standards for students. We know that these are best practices, and I think what I'm most proud of is we have not changed the course over the last three years. We've added in other pieces, like instructional coaching and some other things that we know, Saturday Schools and tutoring for every school, summer school for every school, those kinds of things that are happening, we'll layer in gifted and talented. But what I'm really proud of is that we're now establishing kind of a new, a new way of doing things in Lansing that is just really consistent. This is not the pendulum swinging from left to right, and this year we're doing one thing and the next thing, we're doing something else. So I just, if you look back on all of your ninety-eight B presentations, I really hope you don't keep them all. They'd be quite a filing cabinet full, but you will see that this slide has really stayed consistent for each presentation. And so I'm really proud of the work that this district has been doing. All right. Drop the hot seat now.
At least for a while.
That's right. All right, so we are going to talk, I'm going to talk you through the partnership district benchmark review. So as you know, we have schools in the partnership. What that means is those are the schools that are in the bottom five percent of the state as measured by the school index. So if you remember, the school index is not just proficiency on M-Step, it is not just achievement. That is a major component of that, however. It also includes things like, and I'll refer, whoops, wrong way, to, to the following things. So in the bulleted points, you'll kind of see what the school index contains. It is things like attendance, it is things like behavior, it is suspension rates, it's chronic absenteeism. It also talks about having access to the arts. So there's a lot of things that go into the school index for the state, and those come out once a year. So when we met with the MDE, we meet with the MDE, the ISD, the Lansing School District, we had a huge meeting, actually in Halleck Center, we took up half of the conference room. They had that many people come, and so did we, which was really wonderful, to see that many people kind of surrounded around our student achievement for kids. So these are the areas that we talked and reviewed with the MDE and ISD, the ones listed in the bullet points. And then what happens in that meeting is everyone has to come to agreement. So they will pull up a school on the clever touch or the screen, and we will review, for example, Avril. And we will go through line by line, how did they do with office referrals? How was their student achievement? How was their NWA growth? How was their chronic absenteeism? How was their daily absenteeism? And we go through all of the things, and the ISD says, yes, we think they met it. We say, yes, we think we met it. And the MDE says, we think you met it too. And they say, great, you've met it, and they checkmark. It's quite a process, as you can see. And so we did that with all of our schools. Then you leave that meeting, and you're still not sure quite how you're doing yet, because then you have to wait for the school index scores to come out, which of course is later than that meeting. It's closer to November. After they get the scores, then they provide us with a final report, which Ben and I really went through with a fine-tooth comb. We did find a couple of errors in there, so we wrote them back and said, there's a couple of things that need to be changed, which they did. And then Ben signed off on the agreement. We then have, which happened on January twenty-ninth, and then we have about sixty days, I believe, before we, that we need to be able to present to the board and make this public. So that's why we're here tonight. So I'm excited to show you where we are and also answer any questions that you might have about the process or where our schools might be. So if we take a look, we're probably wondering, the thing that everyone's wondering is, what are the results? So what do we see on the, on this partnership report? The way that the MDE puts this together is there are three metrics within all of those metrics. So it's very, it is very complicated. We have process benchmarks that are things like they need to hold monthly data, data meetings. So processes in the schools or system building that schools will put into place to help them be successful. This, to me, is one of the most important components of the partnership, because we know that when schools are not performing, a lot of times it's because they don't have strong and consistent systems in their schools. So we're proud to say that all of our partnership schools met four out of four for their process benchmarks. They have, then they have another bucket, which is our local outcomes. So that's everything that is outside of process and outside of M-Step. You can kind of think of it in that way. Everything else kind of falls in the middle. So the local outcomes are things like absenteeism, office referral rate, NWA Met Growth, and NWA proficiency. And so those are the middle ones. And we have some schools that didn't quite meet their benchmarks. We had several that actually had an increase in office referrals, or they didn't maintain the number of office referrals. So then we need to look back at, how strong is their proactive approaches in their school? How strong are their, their restorative practices? How are they looking at their data to be in the right spots at the right time to be proactive about behaviors? So that's the local outcomes. And then, of course, the state assessment outcomes are things like M-Step, PSAT, and SAT. And in that category, you can see, for example, Atwood met one out of two, so that tells me that they either did not meet their goal in ELA or math. We have schools like, let's see, Lyons, two out of two. That tells me that they've made their goals in both ELA and math. And that's where those scores are coming from. And then in increase in the school index value, every single school in this category had an increase from the time they were identified until now. So they take all of this into consideration, and then you come up, they come up with a final score for each of the schools. And when I say final, I mean at the eighteen-month benchmark. So we were halfway through it, and it's, there's like this strange delay at the beginning. So actually, this next M-Step we're taking this spring is the determinant of our exiting of our partnership. So even though it looks like eighteen months, we don't have another year and a half left, right? So this actually takes place in a delayed fashion, so they can get all of the data together. So which schools are on track? When we take a look at the metrics I just showed you, every single one of our partner schools, or partnership schools, is on track, with the exception of Avril. And you might be wondering, well, why Avril? So if I take a look at the screen before, you can see that Avril is the only school that did not meet the state assessment benchmark. They had zero out of two, so they missed their goals. I can kind of show you two, if I, I'm going to really take you back, though, so you just hang on. We take a look at Avril's, let's go to proficiency, I can do both. So if we take a look at Avril's NWA reading proficiency, they are increasing. So their scores are higher than last winter, which is really excellent. So we are seeing growth in Avril, and so I'm very hopeful that we will be seeing them meet their M-Step goals for the, for this spring. And I can probably go back to math, let's take a look there. And Avril for Met Growth, we can go to proficiency. I'm going to make you nauseous before this thing is over. Here we go. And there's their proficiency in math. So again, Avril is seeing an increase in their math from winter to winter. So we're really excited about the strides that Avril has made since the last, the last benchmarks for M-Step. So let's take a look now. How do the schools compare two years later? So these are schools that were identified using the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, so the composite comes out in twenty-twenty-two. So you can see the cutoff for that year for the state of Michigan was twenty-three point eight-eight. That's how our schools were identified. So of course, they're all going to be red, because they're the schools that were identified that did not meet the cutoff. You might be asking yourself, like I did, well, wait a minute, Sexton's at twenty-three point eight-eight, so how does that work exactly? It is a cutoff, and that's how they rank it, but at that point, Sexton was not even, was not making their graduation rate requirement for the state. So we obviously know that that has been met over the last several years, but that was one of the major identifying factors for Sexton. If you take a look now, this past year for twenty-twenty-four, these are the numbers that were just released this past year, just a couple of months ago. The cutoff now is thirty-two point one-seven. And so all of our schools, with the exception of Avril and North, have exceeded that metric. So you may be saying to yourself, well, what does that mean? Well, if the state was identifying partnership schools right now, in this very moment, we would have two schools that would qualify, instead of all of the schools that we had prior to. I think there's ten, nine or ten schools. So again, schools are really putting in system-wide approaches to really making sure that they are meeting students' needs. We, of course, know that we have a long way to go, but we're really proud of the progress, and we know that that consistency over time is going to get us where we need to go as a district. We will have the M-Step coming out here this spring, and when we take the M-Step test, that will be the, one of the last metrics they will need. And then we will find out how many schools will be exited out of the partnership agreement this coming fall. And now I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent to talk to you a little bit about the education recovery scorecard. I can flip through, you're welcome to, absolutely. Oh, sure you will.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you, always a little bit different from this vantage point. But I do, before I get into the Harvard study, I really want to highlight the last slide that Jessica showed. To put this in perspective, when I became the superintendent, when we first started to have the partnership conversations, almost half of our schools were in partnership. That meant that almost half of our schools were in the bottom five percent of the state. So that's a relative number, right? It's not just an, just a regular number. It's versus everybody in the state, we were in the bottom five percent, almost half of our schools. Now, and we still have time, and we're moving in the right direction, now we would only have two schools. That's incredible. And those two schools, Avril and North, if you look, it's not like they're not making huge gains. North more than doubled their score. So we know that North is in, is going in the right direction. When you look at their proficiency rates, we know they're going up. So by the end of this year, our hope, like it should always be, is we'll actually have zero schools on that list, which, as far as we can tell, is the first time that's ever happened, where we don't have at least a school on some sort of list from the state. So I really want to congratulate everybody, the teachers, the principals, the kids. This is just tremendous growth over the last couple of years, and we're really, really proud. And again, because the school index score isn't just a graduation rate, or isn't just a proficiency rate, it's this like amalgam of all the things we care about, attendance and, and test scores and what have you, is that it really shows as a school as a whole, things are really moving in the right direction. And as kind of proof of that, is that the Stanford and Harvard study look at not just schools around Michigan, but school districts, you know, certainly around the country. And what this study looked at was twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, what happened? We know that the pandemic happened, we know that things did not go great for this country, we know things, you know, got kind of worse. But the question is, relative to that, how did Lansing do? And then, because the study just came out, they then now have looked at the last three years from twenty-two to twenty-four, and how did we do? And it's been pretty amazing. So that's a lot of dots, and I have to put on my glasses, but what you're seeing in front of you is the change in math achievement from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two. So this is every school district in Michigan or thereabouts, and the size of the circle is the size of the district. And on the left-hand side, it's the change in achievement, and on the right-hand side, it's free and reduced percentages. So what you see here is sadly a travesty. What you see is that Lansing School District was one of, if not, the single lowest achievement district in terms of math achievement from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two. Now, we are certainly, you can see, more impoverished, we have a higher rate of free and reduced, but where you see that circle, right, by that seventy-five, what that says is our children lost more than one year of kind of learning during those pandemic era. And if you look at similar districts like a Kalamazoo, or a Dearborn, or a Grand Rapids, they lost too, but they didn't lose like we lost. And this is about math. And that, you know, purple line is just a best-fit line, so you can see where we are. And this is math. This is reading. Pretty similar. This is reading from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, change of school districts in Michigan. And where do you see Lansing? You see Lansing at one of the bottom. We have more company there, right? We, we do know, we have a little bit more company. This one, we're pretty alone. Here, we have a lot more company, and especially around districts that are more impoverished. But you can see that our children were losing almost a grade level in, in reading from that kind of pandemic era. So where are we now? This is math achievement. So what's really terrific about this is not only did math achievement go up when a lot of districts went down, but we're actually above the state average. So, you know, for the first time in a long time, Lansing's achievement rates are actually above the state average or at the state average, you can see the circles kind of like touching it, but we're doing better than Kalamazoo, better than Grand Rapids, better than Kentwood, and even better than places like Rochester, which have a much lower free and reduced price, so, free and reduce lunch situation. So, you know, what you see here is good news. We're certainly not anywhere near the bottom like we were. Certainly, I would love to see us, you know, I would certainly love to see us do even better. You know, good, good job, Dearborn, that's pretty impressive. But the good news is, after kind of going down, we're now going up and we're beating our peers. And then, the slide that makes me really happy, this is our reading score. We, in fact, have the highest growth rate in the state of Michigan over the last three years. That's really, really incredible. Because what this is showing, because you can see us all the way at the top there, is that the rest of the state, other than whatever that other circle is, and I don't know who they are, I apologize, the rest of the state during twenty-two to twenty-four actually still continued to decrease in reading. They slowed the roll, because here you have the reading was really low, you know, negative point four, negative point eight. Here, the roll kind of slowed down, but where you see us is we're, we actually gained in an era when almost nobody else gained, and we actually gained the most out of any school district in the state of Michigan. Now, we have a long way to go to get back to where we were in twenty, you know, ten and twenty fifteen, but the fact that over the last three years, we're, we had the highest reading score achievement change in the state is really impressive. And so we wanted to share that with you, because all of these other numbers are super meaningful, the proficiency one being the most important, the fact that we have four hundred more kids proficient in one subject and three hundred and change in another. But it also shows, I hope, that this study, which is a national study with some of the best universities in the world, and what do they show? They show that over the last three years, we're really doing something special. So I want to thank Jessica and Anna, and of course, the entire department, but I also want to thank our teachers, our kids, our families. You don't get this without a real concerted effort with focus on student achievement. So with that, I want to turn it back over to Jessica, and I will let her take all of your questions. I'm going to sit back in my seat, but I really do want to thank the board for the indulgence today. And the last thing I'll say from this seat is, I hope you all and the community recognize, we used to do this ninety-eight B because it was the law. Like, we had to do the presentation, we did it during COVID, because everybody wanted to know what was going on. Well, they got rid of this law like two years ago, but we still do it every year, twice a year, because we believe that not only should you know this information, the community should know this information, and we should be willing- know this information, the community should know this information, and we should be willing to share, good or ill, how our students are doing. And so that's really meaningful, I think, to how we're running this district. And I really applaud Jessica and her team for doing that. So I'm going to give her back the clicker if she wants to use it. And I'll go over there.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides, for the presentation and your colleague. Are there any questions for our presenters this evening? Okay. Dr. Rodriguez, please.
Thank you. I have several questions, but I want to ask for the superintendent before I forget. When you are talking about the last four graphics, you are talking about growth. We are not talking in the real situation that we have with the other districts. We're talking about growth, but we didn't see where Lansing is compared with the other district and the real situation today.
Yeah, I mean, the study was about.
But it's great. I congratulate everybody you say some more for, for the growth, but doesn't mean that we are passing other districts.
Right. And that's where the proficiency rates come in, but the, the study that we were given, it just shows that growth comparison. But, I mean, yeah.
I think that, I don't want to fight for all the district, but just for notes to find out where our students are compared with the other ones, you know, but maybe another time. Thank you.
Alrighty. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Hi, everybody. It's time for me to be a wet blanket. So, so as many of you know, statistics are my passion. That's what I teach at Michigan State. And I, for our June 98B presentation, I usually join these, these wonderful presenters up here to do some inferential statistics. So I just want to remind my board colleagues and the public that what we're seeing today are descriptive statistics and not inferential statistics. What that means is we cannot draw conclusions about change because the change that we see may be due to random chance. There is a special type of statistical analysis that decides whether two numbers are meaning, are meaningfully different. So although we might see that a particular school had a math net growth rate of 5% and now it's 6%, we need to do a separate set of testing to know whether that 5% to 6% actually means a meaningful increase. So I would caution us to stay away from language, like saying we have increased in this area or we've done better in this area, without recognizing that that could be due to random chance until we do the inferential test, which we do in June. The reason that we don't do that for the February meeting is because the midway through the year is more of kind of like a descriptive, a check-in. And then in June, when we have the end of the year information, that is when we can do this test to see if the growth is meaningful in a way that is statistically significant. So that's my first caveat I want to give. That's not to say that we haven't seen great progress. In fact, I would be quite surprised if a lot of this was not statistically significant, but I have to give that caveat or else my, my brain hurts. The second caveat I would like to give is relevant to the last four graphs that we saw. I'd love if we could go back to just one of them, doesn't matter which one. Or not, not a big deal. I just, like the last, this last one here that we're, yeah, from the, the Harvard study, we got change in reading achievement from 2022 to 2024. There we go. That one's a perfect example. I just want to caution us that, so the graph is a little confusing to read if you're not like really into graphs like I am. And so we can basically ignore the X-axis. Those are the numbers along the bottom because that's just relevant to free and reduced lunch. It's just the way that these people are choosing to kind of sort where the schools are. That's not relevant for us. What we care about is the Y-axis, the up and down on the left. And what the Y-axis is saying is the change in reading achievement, right? So this is the change, the percent change score. And what that dotted line next to 0.00 means is that there was no change at all. Okay? And so what we're seeing here, I would disagree with the superintendent's assertion that we have grown because we're kind of right next to that zero line, right? We have grown maybe a .1. .08, yeah. And, and I, I would feel pretty confident that that is not statistically meaningful. And so while it is certainly good news that we, unlike all the other districts up here, have not continued to reduce our reading achievement, because that's what we're seeing, right? So from 2019 to 2022, everybody dropped off in a really big way, us more than anybody. And then what we're seeing now is that most districts are still continuing to kind of see this drop-off, but we are holding steady. So I just want to be really clear about that interpretation because it's not, this is not necessarily indicative that we are improving. This means that we are not continuing to lose. That's still, that's still a really big deal, right? Like we were losing out big time in the, in the other two graphs, but I want to be really clear about that interpretation. Okay, I don't actually have a question, so I'm sorry for totally hijacking this. But like I said, statistics are my passion. And I just want to be really clear about what we're seeing, what we can conclude from it and what we cannot conclude from it. I do think that there's, there's evidence of some really great change. I think that's, that's undeniable. But I just want to make sure that we are not overstating what we know from this presentation and so that we, you know, have a good direction to follow moving forward. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh. Trustee, trustee Williams, did you have a question?
I do have questions. First, thank you all for the presentation. I, I, for clarification points, first and foremost, tier one, is that our special ed and EELAs and tier two are everybody else? Am I correct in saying that or is that vice versa?
So to what tier one means is just the, the general instruction that we give to all students. So it is kind of your baseline. It is where a teacher teaches right from the curriculum and is on grade level. It is the access to the curriculum that every student has. If you have tier two accommodations, it means where we're pulling small groups typically in the classroom and we are giving you targeted supports based on things that you may have missed. So if we have a math lesson and you are missing certain standards or you have holes in your learning, we'll pull you in a small group. We will reteach those strategies. Tier three is typically an intervention program that you are in, and that is where it is more targeted. It could be students with an IEP, but not necessarily because students with IEPs have accommodations. And I also want to make sure that we're not saying that we have tier one, this is not what you said, by the way, but we, we do hear this district-wide that we have tier one, two, and three students. That's actually not the case. Students are students. Strategies are tiers. So I might be tier one today with, I got the lesson the first time through that my teacher taught me. Tomorrow, I might need tier two strategy. So I just want to be clear about the language because we do hear a lot, even from teachers in the district, there's a lot of misnomers, like, oh, those are tier three students. No, 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 no. Students based on a standard can move tiers. So I'm really glad you asked that question because it is something that is vocabulary that we're trying to make more common.
So we were thinking the same thing. So that is actually why I asked the question because a lot of people don't understand that aspect of it.
Absolutely.
So my second question is you said that in checking the scores and validating scores, so we, we test second graders this year and second graders last year. I guess a concern for that is that while we're not following that student, we're missing because as a parent, I, you know, we've always done the NWA, we've talked about this for years with my child and I see the growth, but comparing him, so if he took it last fall, he's an 11th grader now, so his numbers are not where they should be. And so it's not a good record. So how can we fix that or monitor that to make sure that while we're following the students, we're also following that actual grade level so that they are actually being scored and charted? Because some of them are beyond proficient and have exceeded that and it's not showing that.
I think part of that is when we're looking at bar graphs like these, these are not typically the, the data that we look at for schools, right? So a school can look at their, oh, did we go up? Did we go down? Just to say exactly what Dr. Kavanaugh said, well, how much did we go up? Is it one student? Are they a better guesser than they were last year? There's things that can skew your data or your scores. What we look at though is actually the student profile report, which is the, in my mind, NWA, if you're hearing me, it's the best report they came out with because what it does is I can pull up an individual student and I can actually see from the beginning of time that they started, NWA, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, over time, what is happening with those students. In fact, one of the things that we're really looking at is met growth and proficiency, depending how you look at it, can skew the way that we look at our, our children. So for example, you might have a student that met growth this year, but their score is actually less than last year. And so it is very important that though we're not looking at cohort data here tonight, we do follow cohort data child by child to look at. At the end of second grade, if you ended at, let's say 150 was your RIT score, it needs to be higher than 150 in your next year. Otherwise, your, your learning is going to regress. And sadly, has been, when, it was a memory that I have from when Ben first came in as superintendent and showed us the Stanford study, and I was really blown away like, oh my goodness, are students actually regress as they're going through Lansing? What's happening? And that's because we're not, we were not looking specifically at cohort data during that time. And so it is really important to say that our students in Lansing, the graph should look like this for students as they go from year to year. It's not good enough that you go, oh, met growth, met growth, right? Because you can have that for a student that may start out in the fall a little bit lower. So I'm also glad that you lifted that because you have to look student by student to see. Also, we have students that are proficient. And when their proficiency rate and they're not growing at all, but their score is high enough to keep them proficient, it's like how many years though before they go underwater, right? Before they're now not proficient? So it's really important that we follow student by student across many years.
So I'm going to segue into that and say, is it possible? I know we have this data, but end of year, can we add that cohort? So like class of 2026 would be our 11th graders. How have they been going through the whole process? Can we add that for our final piece at the end of the year report? Because I think that would make parents and everybody in the community say, okay, this class is graduating next year. This is how much they've grown. This is what they're doing. Because I think it lends more to the educators, the teachers, everybody that's involved to see that, well, no, we're not meeting here but this child. And as they've been going, they're doing what they're, so I think that would help the community as a whole. I do know, and I'm going to say kudos because I think when I started two years ago on the board, we had 13 schools, but we never congratulated those four that fell off. Can, do you remember what four fell off? Two high schools, Eastern and Everett, I do remember that. Oh, my God. Oh, my God, help me, Jessica. We got two other, we got four schools that fell off. That's a good thing.
Partnership?
Yeah, it was 13.
So we actually, so, oh, okay. All right, let me back up. So actually, what you're referring to is, you're digging in the data, which is awesome. They are actually schools that were deemed partnership, but not in the agreement. So we just still do have a couple of schools that are what we call ATS schools, which are additional targeted support schools. Those are schools like Eastern, Everett, Sheridan Road. And there's one more, Capital Area, I think is the other one. I'm hearing it behind me. Dwight Rich. Thank you. They are actually still all partake in the partnership agreement. All of the things that we do for our partnership schools, we actually do for them too. We actually do those district-wide. But those are student, those are schools that are still targeted support. So they are, it's technical, right? So they're considered in the partnership, meaning that we're watching them, but they are not partnership agreement schools. So they haven't made it to that level yet. So thank you for lifting that because they, they haven't fallen off yet. We're hoping that's the case. But they're on like what we'd call like the watch list.
Yeah, just as a kind of a clarification, those schools had things that we had to address, but they were not on the bottom 5%. So they're not part of the agreement agreement because just as a reminder, if you're in the bottom 5% and you continue to be, the state actually can do some pretty draconian things and they can actually like get us to do things. With ATS schools, as Jess is saying, it's more of a like, let's make sure things are good, they're moving in the right direction, they don't fall off. But there, those four, and I'm really glad you talked about that, those four are making great progress, they're doing great work, but they're not part of the 5% or lower. And so that's why they're not, we didn't have to sign on them and we didn't have to present on them. We're happy to always present on them, but that's the different kid, the different kids.
I think trustee Williams, are you?
I have one more question. So my final question, because I saw, no, we still have those two schools that are not performing well. What factors are, are there other things outside of just the testing that could be causing that, like their long-term subs, the inconsistencies? So I mean, how are we looking at that, that, you know, we don't want to affect the staff in that building, but the external factors that are causing that? Because, can you address that?
Sure. So the first thing that we do whenever something like that would happen is we take a deep dive into the schools. As you know, there are measures that we have within the partnership agreement that if they're not making certain metrics, that we have certain measures that we can take to make sure that there's proper leadership or there's proper staffing at those schools. So as the board knows, at Avril, we had Dr. Sarah O'Neill, who stepped in as interim principal this fall. And we now have wonderful Charles Green as the principal there, who was coming on board just last month. And so we did signal a change of leadership at that school to make sure that we could get the school back on track and in the right, on the right path, which you can see by some of the data that you've seen, they are moving in the same, in the right direction, at least in the area of reading right now. Math, they have a little bit of area to, to grow, but we believe that the signal in leadership was one. The other thing is making sure that we have the right supports in the school. So we're looking at, do we need to have a DSS, for example, which is our district student support specialist? We have Cordelia's office often will place special supports in our schools. So we looked at that. We did the same thing at North. So we also had our interim principal in the fall, Dr. Peyton Stalter. And you might, may be wondering why we chose these two individuals. They were actually both our partnership directors. So they know this information inside out and backwards. They have been very successful principals in their own schools. And so we felt that that was the, those were the best two individuals and they said yes, they took the challenge on. We now have Javita Kyle as an interim principal there at North and Dr. Stalter is still supporting that school actively every week. At North also, because we do have the long-term subs, we had many teachers at North that were not certified, but were not just not certified, they were actually long-term subs. So those, and then we even had a couple that were rotating subs. So the students wouldn't even know from one day to the other which individuals were going to be in those classrooms. That was specific to North. One of the things that we're really happy about is we have what we call the 1.2 teacher. So we put out postings several months ago looking for teachers that we actually incentivized and they are able to earn 1.2 of their salary. So there's a bump there. And it was based on certain criteria. They had to show a certain success. They had to be, have taught for more than three years. And we were able to hire, I believe it was five teachers specifically and mostly in the middle school areas. And let me tell you, if you walk into those classrooms, the kids are like, yay, I have this teacher that's here every day and they are highly skilled. We have one that came as far as Texas that joined us. And so we're really happy to see the change in staff. So those are just a few of the things that, that you've lifted that there does have to be a real overhaul at some of those schools to make sure that we're not just changing one thing. It has to be like, okay, what's happening here that's not happening at some of our other schools?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad you asked that question. When we see data like this, you have to ask yourself, what does the whole system look like? And North was one of those schools where we had sub after sub after sub, where we had non-certified teachers, we had vacancies. And thanks to the partnership with the union, the teachers' union and some really thoughtful work from HR, that building is now more fully staffed this year than it probably has been in years, even pre-COVID. And so we know that the most important person in a child's success in a school is the teacher in the classroom. And so we've really done some great work there, but we also do know that leadership matters too. We have a lot of hope and support for Charles Green and Javita Kyle. And, you know, we really think that the two of them are going to do some great work. So, you know, and I appreciate the question from the board too, because I want to make sure you ask us, you say, hey, Ben, if these schools aren't doing well, what, what extra are you doing for them? And so these two schools actually have gotten some like super extra stuff. And, you know, my firm belief is that, you know, by next year, we'll have all those schools above that cutoff. So, and, and you can see that the winter NWA scores are showing progress even now. So I feel pretty comfortable.
Trustee Williams, are you all set? Wonderful. Trustee stroke.
Awesome presentation. Again, I definitely know what it's like to have to pull this data together and then present it to a bunch of people and also make sure that we're presenting the information in the way that people can obtain it and being clear on with, Dr. Kavanaugh had already lifted in regards to making sure that the
um, and being clear on with, uh, Dr. Kavanaugh had already lifted, um, in regards to making sure that the language we use is very careful um, surrounding what changes are actually being made and not. Um, so I'm jumping to one of the questions that came up, and that's me switching my Saria hat from a parent to a board member sometimes. You mentioned that we have access for tutoring for each level grade. Can you confirm, is that actually true in every school or not?
So it's not at every grade. We have tutoring available at each of our schools. Um, because we have to make sure that staff can actually come and do tutoring, we've targeted specific grades. Um, and the principals really have decided which grades they're going to focus on. And some of that really comes down to which teachers are available to do tutoring after school. So thank you for that clarification. We don't have tutoring currently at every single grade at all of our schools, but we do have tutoring available at our schools.
Awesome. I'm very quick because I know we've had a lot around of questions. My other thing is that I was looking over at the information in regards to the data for the, uh, specific, when it came to the met growth for our youth from grades first through sixth grade in that first half there. You'll see that we did really okay, pretty well with the met growth, but it also brings, highlighted for me of the conversation that Trustee Roslin had already mentioned about those youth that are doing extremely well, but it's, it may not show that tracking. And so it brings up in my mind again, the conversations surrounding the gifted and talented program. What are we doing with those youth? Are we utilizing a system where you might pull a certain child to track? Or you spoke about that bubble student, right? Following those metrics as they go and what the action plan could be. Because what we don't want to do is, we definitely want to move our kids up, that needs to be making proficient changes, but we also want to highlight the youth that are already in those spaces and making sure that they're growing as well. So I guess, um, as a district, and I lift this to Ben as well, with making sure that we are always thinking ahead. Um, it's awesome that we have made some changes and even looking at the scores that we are, um, right where we're supposed to be versus maybe two schools that still need some, some support. So I do want to lift that the work is being done, but while we're doing the heavy lifting, we still have to be accountable to those youth who are excelling.
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up and, you know, it's actually Jessica and I, uh, were meeting about this today. Um, and, you know, really to point out that the district over the last couple of years has made a conscious decision to focus on our most at-risk kids and our kids that are below proficiency but close to proficiency. And the good news is, it looks like it's working, right? And that's always good. It's like if you're going to invest time and money and, and effort, it does it work. And, you know, when you compare the reading proficiency over the three years and the math proficiency, with math, we've almost doubled. Um, now, look, it should be a lot better, don't get me wrong, but to go from nine to seventeen and a half, that's an almost doubling of the, the proficiency for math. And from fifteen to twenty, that's, you know, five out of fifteen, so that's a one-third, it's a thirty-three percent growth, that's great. So we've done that, but you are a hundred percent right that what we haven't focused on yet is what about those kids that are at proficiency but aren't being pushed, that aren't getting there? And so what we now need to do as a district is really have those opportunities. You can call it GNT, you can call it honors, you can call it acceleration, doesn't really matter. The question is, how are we serving our kids that are now proficient and maybe a little bit bored? Or maybe aren't making that growth? And so, uh, my hope is that over the next couple of months, you're going to start to see it, this board's going to see it, this community's going to see it. And by the beginning of next year, you'll see some real great, um, kind of advanced work for our kids. And then our hope would be that our proficiency rates will go up even further and our met growth, uh, rates will go up even further, too. Because as you've noticed, you know, we've kind of stagnated, right? The met growth, you know, to, to, to channel my inner, uh, you know, Kaitlyn Kavanaugh, you know, forty-eight point nine six, forty-nine point eleven and forty-nine point seventy, that's all really the same. That's, I cannot say that we went up, I mean, we went up, there's mathematically we went up, but really that's not that much, right? And so, you know, we, we see that. Now with math, it's a little different, fifty-one to, to fifty-seven, there is something there. But, but you are a hundred percent right, and I want this community to hear that we are focusing on all of our different wonderful children, but we had to make sure that our most at-risk kids and our kids that were below proficiency, that we set those kids up for success. And now moving forward, we're really going to set up everybody, so thank you for that question.
Yes, and just, uh, following up, I know that a lot of times, being a parent in the district, you hear a lot of conversations surrounding our, our youth that are at risk and surrounding the rates that are not so well. So I just always want to bring back in the forefront of the community, we do have kids that excel, we do have kids that meet above the metric. I have one of those kids. Um, and so I just want to make sure we're highlighting that in our conversations, just as well as we have kids that need extra support. And we're doing the work and you all are doing it, too, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Boyer.
Hello. Love seeing you all at the table. So I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I know it was digging through a lot of data. I love digging through data.
Me, too.
I love spreadsheets, it's my love language. So this, it is, I love systems and data and all of that. So in, um, I want to reference first something Trustee Williams had mentioned in regard to the difference between following a student versus following the grades. So grades from last year to this year. Is it correct to assume we do that so that way in some ways we can measure the development of the curriculum? So we can see how did the second graders last year do with maybe a pilot program or a program that might have been new to them? And now this year, are we seeing that teachers are even able to kind of even look at the teachers on, oh, it seems they may be more comfortable with the curriculum? Would that be why we would do grade from last year to grade this year?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons for sure. And I think the other thing that we have to do is, um, we can look at that and then we also look then by the cohort, by school, and then even by grade level. Because sometimes what happens in our schools is we might see second graders, um, from last year, the cohort from second to third are really growing at a particular school. And then that way we can really look at, okay, and then is there a grade level that that, right, that grade level? Is there a teacher? And then we can lift practices. Because sometimes it's that there's different experiences or different methods that the teachers are using. And so we're really trying to lift the excellence in our teaching staff that's happening. To say at this particular school in third grade, wow, this teacher every year can get those, get those, they go to fourth grade and they just keep excelling. Something magical is happening there. And so we just kind of need to figure out, okay, what can we glean from that teacher? And we do spend time in those teachers' classrooms, thank you to those of you that are out there, you know who you are. Um, and then we lift those practices and we even have principals that have, um, visits to those particular classrooms and grade levels to lift those experiences. There's a couple of reasons why we would look at that, but that is an excellent one. And those are things that we're really going to be looking at with the new CKLA curriculum, My Perspectives, and then into from Go Math now to Reveal and/or IM, which are, and InVision, and there's a couple others for high school, but.
Yeah, I know, having been in the classroom, I know the deep dig she's talking about with you can look at the individual student. I found that that was more helpful for parents to show up to parent-teacher conference because you can print out, this was your student's growth from last year when they were in third grade or second grade to now, did they meet a growth? Did they, was, was there, uh, a slide? Was there retention? What did they retain? And so that's kind of why I like looking at the way we're doing it, because you're seeing and tracking the curriculum development. Is the curriculum we're using, is it working? Are students responding? Are teachers responding to it? And I believe that is what is very, very important. Um, you talked about piloting a math program and, and you just named them. What, what's the math program that we are piloting? Because Go Math?
So currently we have Go Math, that is the, oh, your face says lots of things right now.
I did, it didn't spend enough time with each.
That's what we're done now with Go Math, this is the last year.
Thank you, it was just way too.
It is not, was not very popular.
No.
Um, it's run its course, thank you, Go Math. Um, however, right, well, we're just saying, like, and our teachers have done a good job, though, really trying to supplant, like, supplement the curriculum and do things. But actually, what I will say is nationwide, there is a real push for really high-quality curriculum. And so we're really seeing, um, some curriculum that we are very happy to be seeing in the school district right now and in the hands of our teachers. So for kindergarten through eighth grade, um, the first semester pilot was called Reveal. Um, and I think that's a McGraw-Hill. Oh, God, Scott Goddard's going to kill me.
That's okay.
Um, uh, right, so we have Reveal. And then, um, for second semester, we have illustrative math, which is also called IM. So those are the two math programs for, um, kindergarten through eighth grade. And then in high school, they are piloting to Reveal again, and then a program called, um, InVision. So those are the, the pilots that we're having. So what will happen with the pilots is the teachers have several rubrics that they use, they'll come to the table, they will bring that to instructional council, we'll review all of this student data. And then next fall, we will have a new math curriculum, which we are very excited.
I'm excited about that, too.
And one thing I, oh, sorry, if you don't mind, one thing I really want to add, and I want to give kudos to the Lansing School District because this occurred way before I was even a thought on the mind of Lansing, is that instructional council, which is a group of educators and administrators, come together to really discuss from a teacher's perspective, what kind of curriculum? There's a lot of districts in this country where that decision is made solely by the superintendent or by like a chief academic officer, or sometimes even by the state. And so it's really kind of amazing to know that we're piloting it. Those teachers will then report back, they have a rubric, they will share it with, with the instructional council. The instructional council will then give, um, me a recommendation, I'll either kind of agree or not agree. And, um, if I agree, ta-da, and then if I don't, we'd go back and have a conversation about it. But that's a really thoughtful move and I wish more school districts did it, honestly, because it gives the power to the teachers who've piloted it and really the kids, because they ask them how they like it, too. And so I will say that right now, I think the math ones are neck and neck. Uh, we were just, Jessica and I did a school visit, uh, this week and the teacher who was using IM was like, the kids really like it. And then we've heard from another one that the, the kids liked the other one, too. So I'll be very curious to see how the vote goes, but, uh, we'll let you know, so.
We only had IM for a week, so.
I like that.
Yes.
Well, I just appreciate that you're listening to the teacher and student feedback. Because my students gave me feedback on what was being taught. And they will tell you whether or not they like it or whether or not this makes no sense. Ms. Kay, this is, why would they teach it that way? They, they could have done it a shorter way. So I really appreciate that. Um, I, another question I just had, just because we say this often and I hear this phrase often, and I, I want to know, is this like an objective interpretation or subjective interpretation? When we say one of the supports we are doing is strengthen tier-one instruction, what does that mean for the Lansing School District?
That's a fantastic.
That's a good question.
So it actually means a lot of things. So tier-one is something that takes a lot to unpack. Um, one of the things that it means to, um, our team and our principals and our teachers really is that all students have access to grade-level appropriate curriculum. So, and it also means that they have access to all of the standards. So we are not looking at our students and saying, oh, they're missing these skills or these skills, and then they never get to the grade-level curriculum. So that's one of the things that it means to me is that we can put all of the scaffolds and, uh, small groups and all of the things in place, but we have to start with the standard and end with the standard. So any way we get there, any means possible, that's where we need to end up. So that's kind of what tier-one means to me and I think to our team. Um, what that also means, though, is it could be things like when we go and do classroom visits or professional development, tailoring professional development to make sure that teachers have the toolkits that they need. Because not everyone knows how to differentiate instruction, not everyone knows how to manage a classroom and pull a small group. So there's so many nuances that kind of go into tier-one instruction. But I would say those would be kind of the major things is making sure we have adequate professional development. Um, for example, with our CKLA and My Perspectives, we actually have instructional coaches that come in. They will model the lessons, they will make sure that the curriculum's being taught. They actually ask the teachers, what are you struggling with? What are you seeing in the curriculum that's not working for students? Where are some areas that you might need some more professional development or training? And I will say in the past, um, having been a teacher in Lansing for many years, it was, we got the curriculum and we had a one-day PD and then you were on your own. And so, um, we know that there was lots of collegiality in the Lansing School District and our teachers support each other, but that should not be the way that, so we have a full implementation plan now with each of our curriculum adoptions. So I would say that those are kind of some major components that go into tier-one.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. You, you mentioned, um, also in this that you're strengthening teacher feedback from principals. Are we monitoring that in any way? Are we going back to talk to the teachers to say, hey, did your principal come in and talk to you about this? Because unfortunately, there are experiences where administrators will say, I'm in their classroom all the time.
There's lots of surprise, I'm going to let her take it and then I'll fill in the gaps if there are any.
We are actually monitoring it by, our, our principals are actually putting it into a platform and then we can actually see the feedback that they're giving to the teachers. So, um, they do what's called scripting, so they'll go into the classroom and they literally script out what they see. And then they take that script and they go, um, either they have a conversation with the teacher in the teacher classroom, like maybe during their planning or after school, or they invite the teacher to their office. But they just have a, it's maybe tops a ten-minute conversation. They have a script that they can actually use, um, there's some questions that they ask the teacher. Um, and they really just have, um, a conversation about what they saw in the classroom. But it's more about what we're teaching the principals is not about telling the teacher what they saw. They're asking the teacher to tell them what was happening in the classroom. So therefore, they're kind of leading that teacher to, um, talk to them about what, how they feel the lesson went, what they feel was strong about the lesson, how they, um, where, how would they rate their lesson on a scale of one to ten? If, if they rated it a seven, how do they think they can get it to a nine? It's really a collaborative effort between the two, the principal and the teacher. But they literally put it into what we call eye observation. And we can literally see the conversation that the principal is having with that teacher, they document it. Um, and that's what we use when we, um, do the trainings. We actually do mock conversations, too, so the teachers can, the principals can actually practice with the teacher. Um, we find that the more the, the more the principals have these conversations with the teachers, the more comfortable they are. Um, teachers tend to, I was a teacher, so I know, teachers tend to get a little, uh, tense when you ask them to come to your office for a conversation or when you, uh, want to even have a conversation with them in their classroom. So that doesn't happen very often. So we're trying to make our principals more visible and just having these, just, just, just a feedback conversation. But we really are being very authentic this year about training. We really are, we're bringing in a really, really good trainer. He is working with small, we, we do large group, so the, he'll train the, the principals as a large group. But then we've also, uh, are starting to do small group trainings with just a select group of, uh, administrators. They will all get small group training. It just depends on the time, um, when we're trying to keep them with their grade bands. So if they're in a K-three school, we kind of try to keep them in a small group in a K-three school with the trainer. But they are consistently getting and, uh, consistently having it modeled for them how these conversations should be held with their staff.
And I, I know eye observation, I guess to clarify a little bit, how are you making sure that these are actual, authentic conversations that are happening? Because with eye observation, an administrator can say, I did a walkthrough. And the teacher will say, they were never in my classroom. They, they, they came and they knocked on the door, is that, was that a walkthrough? So how are we making sure that that is being done authentically and we're not just typing it in eye observation and saying, oh, I had this conversation? And then the teacher is like, we didn't have that conversation. So I guess to.
So one is, some of it's trust, right? Because we can't check every observation for every principal. Um, one of the things, though, that my team does is I have a team of people, whether it's my instructional directors or the, um, Spocks, which are the, um, oversee the elementary, middle or high school. They're all assigned, uh, a, a group of schools and they do weekly, if not bi-weekly walkthroughs directly with the principals. So they are in the classrooms and many of them are modeling the conversations to have with teachers. Because a lot of this, too, we have to think about is, an evaluation is not really what grows a teacher. It's a conversation, it's the reflective practice of the teacher. Every teacher wants to be better than, you know, we're all, they're all striving. I think we all do, we all keep growing. Um, and we want to make sure that we're instilling kind of the gro, the joy back into teaching, too. Like, what did you see today? What would you like to see tomorrow? How could you make this lot, the lesson better? And I think in the past, sometimes it's been very much, I didn't see this and I didn't see this. And then it can be very deflating for teachers. So I think the trainer that we're working with really believes in teacher growth and believes in teachers' reflectiveness of their own practice. So we're really trying to instill that, um, with teachers as well. So they have their, um, instruct, someone from the instructional division doing walkthroughs with them. And then once a month for their admin meetings, we, um, do what we call inter-rater reliability. So actually, we have groups of principals that go through and do walkthroughs together. And so it might, we're doing the trust in the meantime, right? But at least we know bi-weekly, if not monthly, that there are really robust conversations happening with the feedback to teachers. And then we do hear from teachers, too. And so it's just a lot. And so it's just a lot about listening, when we're in schools, to what they're telling us, and then giving feedback and having conversations with administrators as well.
Love it. Last question, really quickly.
Oh, okay.
One more, just one more.
Now, does this have to do with the data?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Knowing that you have some schools that are in partnership, how did we communicate that to parents so they would understand? Because I have two students, and they're both at a partnership school. And I was surprised, because that was not communicated, that they were in partnership. So I'm a little, as a parent, little upset, because I I had no clue. Now, I hear my kids coming home saying, I'm struggling today, or this is what was happening. I heard this all last year, lots of subs in buildings. But I didn't know that. So how are we communicating that to parents, or are we not?
That is a great question. I think from the central level, we have given the tools to the principals to have those conversations with families. I don't know that we've monitored, though, how that is going out regularly and being communicated to families. So I think some of the schools decided to have family nights, or put letters out to families, but I don't actually know systematically how that was communicated. So I'm actually glad that you lifted that, because I think it would be important, if obviously they're not all watching the board meetings, that we do give out, even if it's the 18-month benchmark, here's where we are with your school, here's where we're striving.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, I'm really glad you brought that up. So historically, when there was No Child Left Behind, which is the federal reauthorization of the 1965 Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, not that anybody cares, but with that, there was a form letter that by law had to be sent out to families. And that was very much from the federal government, saying, parents need to know this about your schools. What's interesting, because you're highlighting that it didn't happen, is I don't think the state has anything like that. And so that's actually a really interesting thing, because I would have just assumed, like, they could have done that. So I'm happy to, I mean, we'll look into it, but I have no problem setting a standard for this district that just says, if a if a school is highlighted as being on partnership, you have to write a letter that explains it, and then invites them to either a meeting or a website, or something like that, and we'll do it in multiple languages. But I'm really glad you brought that up, because, you know, the the federal government does that. These is not, this is not No Child Left Behind, this is a state thing. And so, yeah, and I, I mean, not that all the other superintendents will love me for saying this, but I'll happily talk to MDE, too, that they should probably have something like this. So thank you for bringing that up.
That was a great lift. That was a great lift, and that's a great best practice to implement. Is there any more question from our amazing board, Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you very much to all board members for the good question, for the explanation. I have difficulties still understanding that. But I look in kindergarten and reading proficiency, in page three, kindergarten has 24.6 in 2004, 24 and 25. And then the rest of them, elementary and middle school, or whatever you want to call until grade nine, is below that. And then we go to the high school, and suddenly, I don't know what miracle happened during the summer. Did that change? My point is, everybody remember, every child should be, know, had to read in grade third, in third grade. Do we have, how we can, I mean, we we are fighting this for years, and we are not moving this to say, in third grade, 100% of students will be in reading level. How we can create, do we have a program right now? They can address that? We are planning to have one. What we are going to do in the future, I don't care yesterday, what we are going to do upon the future, then real is going to change that culture. We are happy to, not happy, but accepting, like normal learning process in our country.
We can answer it a couple ways, and I'll tag team with Jessica here. So one thing is, as Dr. Rodriguez really highlighted, you see that the score in kindergarten is around 24, and then it's kind of in the high teens, and then it jumps up into the 20s for the high schools. Well, the main reason for that is the exams change. And so, you know, one of the things that we tried desperately to do over the last couple of years was at least to get K-8 to be all on the same exam. If you remember, we used to use something called AIMS Web, which was a very different kind of exam, and that gave very, let's say, wonky numbers, because it made it seem very high, and then somehow our kids went down. And so I'll let Jess explain some of the examining things. But your much more important question is, what are we doing to make sure that by third grade, these numbers get better? Right? That's the, and so one of the things we've done, and we've talked about it a little bit, but we're hoping to really see it into fruition over the next couple of years, is adding assistance into the third-grade classrooms and into the kindergarten classrooms. This isn't just if you have an IEP. This isn't just if you have something that mandates us to do it. We are specifically taking money in our budget to add extra educational adults into the third grade to support reading and math for these kids, and doing it in kindergarten as well. Now, we just started it, so the numbers are a little bit better, right? 15 to 18. I appreciate statistically, we could talk about what that significant is. But, you know, 15 to 18 is something. But our hope is that over the next couple of years, you'll see some real growth. But but you are right. We, as a district, owe it to our children that by third grade, they are more proficient, and that's why we are really significantly investing, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars into it, with the hope that if they get to where you need to be by third grade, that can then carry over third, fourth, fifth, sixth. Because what you do see from our numbers is that there is a kind of steady-ish, it's not like, oh, grade five is at 50%, and everybody's at two. So really, what you're seeing from our schools is that it's a very common thing where, you know, the the grades kind of one through eight are in the kind of middle teens or high teens, and then the high schools get better, and the kindergarten is high. We acknowledge that, and we got to work on it. But Jess, I don't know if there's more stuff you want to add to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So the instructional directors have been working on systematic approach to literacy. And this really came out robustly last year, but the plan has continued this year. So I'm really hoping that we're going to see a lot of growth starting next year, because it takes a while to get the training and the systems in place. We are now fully embracing this, the science of reading. So I think you're going to see those increases start to happen, specifically with our CKLA Amplify reading curriculum. We also have a robust phonemic awareness and phonics curriculum. We have Hagerdy, and we have Ufly. And then this year, we haven't, we're working on full implementation. Training and coaching is currently happening with a program called 95% Group. So what this means to all of you is, when we talk about students that are in different achievement bands, we have strategies for every single band now systematically in the school district to address needs, student by student, need by need. One of the exciting things that we found is, we had a kindergarten classroom, fully implemented 95% group. They were the, one of the first ones to take that on. All of their students now have exited, and they are all fully on standard. So we are seeing that these programs absolutely work, but we need to make sure that teachers feel comfortable implementing them. So the systematic approach to literacy is something, and I've been in the district for a really long time, as many of you know, I've never seen anything this intentional around reaching every student at every band, especially in those K, what I'm going to say, K-five years. So I do think that we have a plan that we've been very consistent with. Now we're layering in the the very high-quality curriculum that we've seen, and then all of these other approaches with phonemic awareness, phonics, and then intervention. So I do think you're going to see some significant growth, and there is a strategic plan happening right now in Lansing.
Thank you, Madam President, but I'm going to challenge this board, and don't blame the teachers or the parents, blame ourselves from now on. If this district continue having students don't know how to read, when they are in third grade, if they need help, money, present that to the board. This board should be responsible for that, and I will talk about that later a little bit more. You're talking about everything here, we do here, we do, present a plan to us, that we can approve, the community can see it, it's exciting, our students, our parents, our teachers. This board should be exciting about the plan that we are having for the future. I am not going to be here more than two years. But I hope so. But but let's go one for all, be all together, and solving that tragedy. It's a tragedy, educational tragedy. We have many others, but I'm not going to talk about that ones. Thank you. And the other question I have about the curriculum, new, we're talking about new curriculum all the time here. Where I can find the curriculum? Do we have the curriculum on the web? Do we know what, this board know the curriculum in the Lansing School District? Do we have the copy? Do we have grade-by-grade objectives that we know? Then the the we communicate, I thought, I thought the teachers know about that, no question about that. But how about the rest of us? Do we approve that curriculum? We should approve that curriculum as a board members. And I I hope that they presented to us, that we know more, that we emphasize, that supporting all this effort the administration is doing, because this board has a role in educating our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Trustee Rodriguez. Thank you for that, for lifting that. Yes, did you have?
The question is, the question is, are going to present the curriculum plan that we are having, that we are going to be aware of, of the curriculum, the new curriculums?
You'd like to see a presentation? Is that what I'm hearing, of the curriculum, or?
I think it should.
Yeah, I think that's important.
We would be happy to do that.
Thank you so much. So Superintendent, you got it on your list? Thank you. Yes, we should have that. And I think you're going to be excited about what Trust, I know, I know, I got it. Go ahead, Doctor.
Yeah, so I'm going to be an insufferable academic and do a comment instead of a question, too. I would like the record to show that I am, that statistics are not my passion at all. But taking us back to the Harvard charts, I actually think that the X-axis provides really important context about who the students are in this school district. And being an ethnographer, I think that acknowledging where we fall in that X-axis is really important, especially in these conversations after the pandemic, and knowing who our students are, what their households may look like, what their incomes are. I think that the holding steady actually means that there's, you know, lots of, lots of great things going on in the school district, and I wanted to just kind of point that out.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Trustee, Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, although questions were asked already, I don't know what I'm going to do. But, yeah, I just want to make sure that, just to verify that our, that our student count is at 9,900, that's where we're landing? That's, that is? Or is there other students that we're not counting in this?
No, 9,900 is where we are. We are in the count window, so that may change in a couple of weeks, but as of today, that's our current.
And does this include pre-K, adult ed, or any of the other programs?
It does not include adult ed. It does not include, so it really just includes who we typically count during count. So no GSRP, no ECSE.
But just, yeah. No, I was going to say, well, just just for information, what are those numbers?
I can get them for you. I mean, that's, that's something that I don't know off the top of my head.
For GSRP, I think we're in the high fours, low fives, and then for adult ed, it's around 200, 250. We can get it to you. But just as a reminder to the community, the district itself runs a myriad of programs. When we talk about count, that's only the K-12 students enrolled in our specific programs, and this is the the number that is not audited yet. I don't want anybody to quote us on the 9904. We should have a count number in the next couple of weeks. Remember, the count window started second week in February, and will end first week in March. So we should, we'll, and usually I'll present to the board on that if you need. But just right now, we are at 9904 for enrolled students in the K-12 system. But this is not an audited number. The audited number will come in like three weeks, so.
And just to be clear, we use the 9,900, because those are the students K-12 that would take the NWEA assessment. So that's the number that we include in the data, because those are the students that are taking it.
Does that mean that those are the students that were there on that day?
Those are the students that are there, and those are the students that are meant to take that assessment, is 9,904.
Okay. But I I certainly would like to know the the whole.
Absolutely.
The the whole picture of of students, because adult ed is as much important as as anything else, and of course, GSRP.
Definitely.
We need to keep them in mind, of course. Trustee Williams touched on something that I was going to ask, and that was about the the training of subs. And I think you said that not all subs get trained on, or get professional development on on the plan that, I'm talking about page, page 10?
So to be specific, any substitute that is in our, in our school district that is long-term, meaning they're not a day-to-day sub, goes to all of the same trainings and professional development as any of our teachers. So they have the same training opportunities and the same training days as our teachers, our teachers do. If you are a day-to-day sub, meaning that I'm sick today, I have a sub come in, or if it is a sub that we're not able to keep a long-term substitute in, so it's one person after another, then no, we don't, we do not do specific training, in depth at least, with those particular people. But anyone who is a long-term substitute teacher in our school district does have access, and is expected, actually, to go to staff meetings and provide, go to the professional development. They are just as any other staff member in that building.
Yeah, Dr. Rodriguez mentioned about the curriculum. So if if the subs, do they get some sort of information about curriculum, so they know what we're talking about when they come for one day to a classroom?
Sure, so. So what that would look like in a classroom is, the teacher leaves detailed lesson plans, and so it might not be detailed on the curriculum, but it will say things, like if it's math, they will tell them the page numbers and what they should do, and they often will put sticky notes in the teacher's guides for questions that they will need to ask. But as far as training specifically, not unless they've been in Lansing, and kind of, a lot of our subs do frequent Lansing, and so they are used to, oh, this is CKLA, or I know what these various things are. But the teachers actually are the ones that put in the hard work to create really detailed subplans for the teachers, or for the substitutes.
The other question about teachers, we have some non-traditional teachers, right?
We do.
In our classrooms? So they get the same training as the regular teachers? What additional supports do you give them? Because they're not, they didn't grow in the education, in in the classroom.
So currently, the supports that we will give to our teachers are, they are all assigned an experienced mentor teacher that they work with. And that means that the mentor teacher will come into their classroom to do observations and look fours. They also have the opportunity to go into their mentor teacher classrooms. These are veteran teachers that are steeped in the practice, whether they were non-traditional to begin with or not. They also have instructional coaches, many at their schools, that will work with those specific new teachers. And then this month specifically, we are launching a new teacher project that will specifically take these teachers under our wings, and making sure that they get very specified, individualized training. Because we have some people that they're non-traditional, but they actually get the hang of it very quickly, and they may not need as much training as someone else. So it really has to be, in some ways, broad brushstrokes, so they all get the same thing. We also have an in-depth orientation for all of our new teachers. It is not, you know, going to make you the best teacher on the planet, but it is going to give you the basics for how you set up your classroom, your management, locating the curriculum, getting you logged into the system. So there's lots of different efforts that are happening through the year. Also, we've had principals that also co-write lesson plans with those specific individuals as well. Those are just some of the few things that we do.
So, okay. Well, thank you for that. I think that's information that people need to know.
Absolutely.
As to when they don't have a teacher, that's not a teacher, per se. Well, one more question on that. How many years can they teach without the certificate? How many years can they teach without the certificate?
Oh, that's a great question for HR because the laws are changing and there's different permits that people can be under. So I would.
I know there's permit, yeah.
I would have to lean on HR to give that specific information.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways I could answer, and certainly I will defer to, to HR and specifics. But if you're on a sub permit, you know, depending on what your level of education is, you can do it for a year. You, also, there's some that are only 90 days, and then you have to actually switch classes. But, you know, what's really wonderful, and I would urge everybody to know this, is because of our Grow Your Own program, what we're trying to really do is people that are substitutes, people that are assistants, we're trying to get them enrolled in college classes so they can get their teaching license, and we actually pay for it. So, you know, please, if you are listening out there and you really want to do this and you're working for us, we've got grant money that we really want to give you. But depending on the kind of sub permit they're on, it could be a year, it could be a 90 days, and then they have to switch class. It, it really depends. But I have, I would love for HR, maybe they'll create like a one-pager to just explain to you the kinds of people that can be in the classroom. Fully certified, on their way to certified, in a program, daily sub. And that, I think, would be a good thing for everybody to know, so happy to do that.
Yeah, because I think there was some language in state law that teachers had to be certified or, or you would not get the, the credit. So that, that would push the, the district down. So, okay. Now, with all this said, and, and the need that, that we know we have to continue serving our students in many different ways, I want to again bring the issue of this board putting together a, a student achievement committee. So that we can, on an ongoing basis, have this conversations with staff and, and keep them, keep us on track as well. And I think that the reading, we need to have a reading plan for our students from beginning to end. That, because some students graduate and maybe they're not at proficiency level. And we need for all of them to be proficient and to have, you know, a comprehension of, of, of what they're reading. If they can't read, they can't do much. We all know that. So I think that from now on, we need to work with that committee. And I'm asking the board president to start putting that committee together so that we can follow up with things like this, you know? So, so with that, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it up to the, the president to follow up on that.
Yes, and I will. We've had this conversation, it's very important. All of our questions have been amazing tonight. I think Trustee Williams has another question. We will be discussing the student achievement committee at our retreats, so be prepared to, to have that conversation. So, Trustee Williams.
Just a few questions. I'm going to go work backwards. Can you hear? Just a few questions, they're going to be, so one of the things, I'm, I'm listening to Dr. Rodriguez, and he's talking about the literacy from K, then going up. Is, I know we have multiple libraries in the area. Is there some way we can partner with these libraries during the summer? I do know during COVID, during the summer, that there were like reading packets and things given out. Can we go back to, to help our students? I mean, book challenges, things like that, we have, anything that we can do to develop our kids, to keep them going. I know for me, summer reading programs were always fun for me. I was actually sitting in our family roundtable the other day, listening to some parents, and they have a book challenge going on currently within their school. And to think that their kids are competing, they have teams that they're competing with, to think that if we can get our kids to do this learning-wise, growing-wise, I think their literacy, our literacy rates will grow up. So, and it is one of our schools that are high performing, so I just want to put that out there. So that's my first question and concern. My second question is, Dr., uh, uh, Trustee Lopez talked about the numbers, but I'm going to have a Dr. Daya moment. Are we hitting our homeless population when we're looking at these numbers? Because they're not always coming to school. How are we reach? Because I believe we have more students missing because they are homeless or transient that are not in our counts. How are we reaching out to them? How are we meeting them where they are? That's my second question, second and last question for now.
And I was going to ask you if you would like to speak on that.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. We, thank you for the question. We have, through the Office of School Culture, under Director Jennifer West's leadership, she oversees the DSSs, who also assist with case management. We have a partnership that we just kind of got involved in with Child and Family Charities, who through one of their grants have kind of given us a case manager solely for our homeless division. And so that person is working between the Office of School Culture and the Office of Special Populations. And so between the, the two offices, we will be, begin targeting on a deeper level to ensure that those who are struggling with homes, home insecurity, that we can get those kids to schools. We have also four vans that run every day where we're picking up students all, all around, outside of the, the city limits. And of course, you know, ensuring that students have ways to get to school. Outside of a school bus, we provide, of course, the CADA cards, gas cards, et cetera. So I think that through our DSSs and this new partnership with Child and Family, we're going to see an increase in services provided to, to those who are struggling.
So let me come back to that. How are the, how are we identifying these students? I mean, we'll, we'll just be transparent and have a moment. We all know my situation in this, but I was never reported to your office. So if their child is not.
Trustee, excuse me, Trustee Williams? We all, we, let me, let me, Trustee, Trustee Williams, I've got the gavel. We all don't know your, your situation, and I want to focus on 98B in the, in the report. I understand your question.
That's part of the report.
But we all don't know your, your situation.
Okay, so let me, so how is a child, if they're not not, if the school doesn't notify you that they're homeless, how are you targeting them? Because somebody has to tell you. So how are you target, if they're not told by the school, how are you know that they're homeless unless they're being told? So we're missing some people, that's what I'm asking.
Self-identification, other members in the district, coaches, SSSs, teachers, administrators, again, self-identification. That's another piece in, in terms of the case management. Getting into the schools, having in-depth conversations with principals, going down the entire roster, starting at, you know, letter A. And, you know, talking about every single student in that building and trying to identify where they're at, who they're with. Ensuring that we're educating on exactly what McKinney-Vento is. Because sometimes, I think, you know, from a cultural perspective, I think that many times our families are, they find themselves doubled up, but that's what we do, right? I mean, I grew up with cousins living in the same household. According to McKinney-Vento, my cousins would have been homeless. So we, we're aware of those factors. We are trying to position ourselves in front of as many in, external groups as possible to help with the, with the identification piece. We are connected with faith groups around the city of Lansing. We're connected with Advent House around the city of Lansing. We're strengthening our partnership with Child and Family, who also dives into homelessness. And so I think that, you know, it, it's a big web. And so if, if everyone's working at the same pace on the same topic, you know, I think that our, our numbers will continue to grow. Our numbers are up this year by 10% in terms of identification as well. So I think that we're all moving in the, in a, in a good, at a good pace and in the right direction.
Thank you for answering that, and thank you for reframing, thank you for reframing your question. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions at this time? Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. At this, you all are amazing. Thank you for presenting the 98B report for this winter. I guess it would be. We look forward to seeing you in the fall, spring, soon.
Our pleasure.
In June.
Thank you.
In June, thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have our superintendent give us his report.
Well, now it's definitely good evening, but it's wonderful to be here as always because, you know, it's already 7:58. I will try not to go too long, but I do want to say a couple of things. One, as you all heard, we really are making great progress, and I definitely look forward to the June one where we can say it is statistically accurate progress. Because we do know that by June, we'll get some even more robust numbers. And what I really look forward to the most is when we get the final numbers about being off of partnership. We already see that our SIS numbers, our school index scores, not something else, that it's also SIS, we're really making big strides. And even the schools that are still under that 5% line, they've doubled, you know, one of them doubled their SIS. So we feel like we're making good progress. There is a lot more to do. I'm the first one to admit that we are definitely not where we want to be, but those, those growth things we're seeing. And I really have to commend our staff. You know, we have a new curriculum in ELA, we have new processes and procedures, and, and it's really working. So congratulations to everybody. As always, our transportation numbers, they're getting better for gas cards, CADA. So we're at 2,384 requested with 2,380 given. So only a four differential, and that's during the school week, which is pretty great. So again, if anybody still needs a gas card, if you want to transfer from bus to gas, please, please, please let us know. We always have those available. Right now, we have 633 students who requested the CADA with 619 given. Of course, that's just the, the time that it takes. So please, if you haven't gotten your CADA card, please go to your school, please talk to the secretary at your high school. And if there's an issue, please let the Department of Transportation know. And in terms of Dean, the number is a little bit large. There's 3,407 have requested, oh, sorry, have gotten a route, and 3,733 have requested. So there's a differential of about 333 or 330 here. One of the reasons why that is, that's including the students that are non-routable. We, we have tried very hard to make sure that we can route as many kids as we can. We have more routes this year. There's a better attendance records. Things are going better. But we do recognize that there are about 300 kids that just are not on the bus. Now, those kids, of course, do have either, they have gas cards or are walking or doing whatever. So please, if you're one of those 300 kids, please make sure that you have a gas card. Please make sure that we're working with you. And we are every day adding more and more kids to our buses. So if you do have that issue, please, please, please be in touch. You might not even remember that you're still on that list. I've talked to a couple of families, they're like, oh yeah, we've been using a gas card for like a year and a half. And they're like, oh, we never said, don't worry about us being on the yellow bus. So just make sure that if transportation is still an issue, you let us know. And I bring this up so much today because it is cold out there. And the last thing I want is kids waiting around or not being able to get to school because of weather, things like that. So please, anybody listening to this, if you have any transportation issues, just call the office, reach out, it, there's, go online, we have all the phone numbers there. Christina and her team will be absolutely happy to, to help you with that. The other, you know, incredibly important thing is, of course, is to acknowledge that this month is Black History Month. You know, this is our last meeting in February, so I want to really make sure that we acknowledge it. We actually have a video we want to show of a couple of our principals talking about the importance of it. But also for the community to know that over the next week or so, a lot of our schools will be doing performances and participation and all sorts of wonderful things. We will videotape that as well and, and make that into something. But because this is our last meeting in the month of February, which is Black History Month, we wanted to make sure to recognize it with this wonderful video and to acknowledge that we're going to be doing quite a lot of things within schools over the next two weeks. And, you know, I would say it, hope, I hope it goes without saying, but sadly, in this world, it does not. The incredible gifts of what make a society whole and loving and someplace that humans want to be is acknowledgement of each and everyone's history, each and everyone's background, each and everyone's talents and love, and, and just belief that we can all be together. And societies have to acknowledge months like Black History Month because for so long, groups, especially African-Americans, have not been able to have that acknowledgement. And a school district, as you saw, that is, you know, almost 40% black, it would be a disservice to not acknowledge the fact that the history of African-Americans is so incredible and that, of course, in some respects, to have one month is unfair and, and not right. All of American history is black history. All of American history includes everybody. And we need to acknowledge the, the worth of all of our children and their backgrounds and where they're from. And this is probably a great plug now to talk about how one of the things that I'm so proud of that this district is holding on to and doing, and Jessica's helping to lead the charge with Carlton and Ruben on the true multicultural education. A lot in community has been talking about kind of a divisiveness that can come with these conversations. But when you look at it from a multicultural lens, where everybody's background is worthy, everybody's background is incredible, everybody's background is terrific, that allows every child to see themselves as somebody who can be positive in society, loved in society and supported in society. And so it's an honor and privilege to be able to talk about Black History Month, but it's also an honor and privilege to talk about multiculturalism because that is something that this district cares, I think, very deeply about. And I can't wait to, I think it's May, I, don't quote me on it, but I think in May, we're going to be presenting what that work looks like. So without further ado, Ryan, could you play the video? And then, I think that'd be great. Perfect.
In the month of February, one thing that we specifically celebrate is Black History Month.
It's not that it's just Black History Month. Black history is a part of American history.
It's an opportunity for us to think about all the wonderful accomplishments and the rich part of the history of our country African-Americans play.
Without our creativeness, without our swag, without our contributions, America could not be the best that it is. It couldn't be all that it is right now.
The teachers have been doing different things within their classrooms, sharing fun facts, historical pieces of information, art projects, just important figures that are developmentally appropriate for our kids to learn about.
I have a collection of Black History Month pop dolls on my table to welcome students and staff when they come into my office. And then to encapsulate the month of February, the last week, which is next week, we are going to have a Black History Month Spirit Week.
Months like Black History Month, Asian American Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and on and on and on allows us to stop and highlight. And it's a way of saying, we recognize you, we see you.
It doesn't live just for the 28 days of February. It lives as a part of the fabric of teaching history. So you can't just pluck out, this is the only time you celebrate black history for this short amount of time.
Everybody that's here in this country, whatever ethnicity is, but especially in this month, as we're recognizing our African-American students, that they hold value in our country. They hold value in the Lansing School District.
You are important. You have a voice in your culture and where you come from. This is a part of the fabric of not just Atwood, but of the United States of America.
Whatever you are aspiring to do as an adult, you can do that. The sky is the limit, and you can really achieve those things that you want to do because we have a trail and a history of others that have done those things in the past.
History is not this thing that was so long ago. We have to be advocates for change. And if we don't advocate for change, if we don't use our voice, if we don't speak up about the things that we experience, about the things that we go through, and, and the lens that we see life through, that some of that will get lost. And we want not just our history, but American history to remain vibrant for all Americans.
Thank you to Ryan and the team, and of course, to our two wonderful principals who had the chance for us to interview. So, you know, we have Keisha and Nicole, who have been just really, really thoughtful about helping with this. So, thank you to everybody. Ryan, thank you for the team for this. And with that, you have definitely heard enough from the district. So, thank you very much, Madam President. It is all yours.
Thank you, Superintendent. I like to say that we celebrate Culture 365, but today we're going to celebrate Black History 365. Alrighty, are there any questions for the Superintendent tonight? Any, oh, no, no questions? Alright, moving on to, no questions for Ben. Moving on to our routine matters, we have committee reports from our Facility Committee, Trustee Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I think we had a really fun meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
Yeah, you were there. I was there, remember? So, you're going to help me make this report or give this report. Anyway, the meeting started at 1:03 PM in this room. We received updates from, for Mount Hope and the status of the school. Looking, looking good. And I think she can tell us everything about Mount Hope. Dr. Nevares Martinez, she lives across the street.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. So, further in the agenda, we have some purchase orders or bid requests to, to approve. But anyway, we heard an update on Mount Hope, on Willow, and we heard about the work that's now moving inside and, and the classrooms. They're doing a lot of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing in that school. Luton, because it's been delayed for a year, you know, with all the changes, they will be doing schematic design and then coming to the committee, then to the board with some drawings and so on and so forth. So, that's in the future. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I think, requests for approval of the bids. We'll go into those as the agenda comes to those items. Do you have anything else to add on, just in general, that we spoke about?
Yeah, I just want to, want to point out that for Luton, I do remember Christine mentioning that they'll be having a parent and community conversation on March 11th and 7th. Ooh, nope. Can you tell us the dates again? I want our community to be able to attend. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I just wanted to make sure this was turned down. We're shooting for the week of the 17th for parents and staff, so we'll be working to arrange that with the principal and then get communication out to our families.
Wonderful. And that we're on track for all of our, our buildings, right? We're on track.
Oh, yeah, we're, we are more than on track, actually. We are ahead of schedule, which is a very nice place to be in case things happen.
One of the things that, that we didn't talk about was the issue of what's happening right now with tariffs and, and all that. I don't know if we will be doing some pre-purchases. And that's further up, but I, I just thinking ahead, you know, what the circumstances will be, and that we may have to come and request, you know, bids for purchase, pre-purchase for, for the materials?
Potentially. Actually, right now, we've, some of the tile that we're putting in at Mount Hope is actually from Italy, and we haven't experienced any issues. I know. We haven't experienced any issues with that just yet, and so, we're thankful for that crazily enough or funnily enough. We've actually been having issues getting stuff domestically because of the crazy weather we've had. So, with the floods that we've had further south, you know, some of the, unfortunately, some of the plants that build some of the cabinetry and stuff like that have experienced flooding or fires and those kinds of things. So, we've had to make some changes. But so far, we've been lucky enough with, with tariff stuff. But yes, we do think about those things when we're making selections to see if, you know, domestic products, if there's an alternate, if we're really, really stuck on something that we need to get that's outside of the country.
The, the other thing that was mentioned, and it just was reminded, is that the roofs for Willow are being worked on, and, and also, they will be setting panels in, in Willow, also in Mount Hope, I think, right? Or Mount Hope isn't going to have panels?
No, Mount Hope will not have panels. Willow will have, Willow has geothermal, which is already installed, and it's underneath our buildings, and then they will get solar panels.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I wanted to mention that because it's, it's a different kind of roof, has to be stronger, sturdier, in order to support the panels that are going to be on top of that roof. And we'll go into the other bits as they come on the agenda. Is there any questions for the President?
Any questions for Trustee Vice President Lopez?
Thank you. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Vice President Lopez. Moving on to our consent agenda, Trustee Lopez did mention all of the bids that was featured about in the facilities report. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Kavanaugh.
Second.
Second by Trustee Nevares Martinez. Any discussion? Oh, my mic is not on. Thank you. Any discussion at this time? Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. What kind of money we are going to use for all these projects?
If you don't mind, can I turn it over to Christina to go through the bids?
Yes.
Yep, happy to go over that. And just for reference, we do list what funds we are using on each of the bids as well, just so we have it as proper documentation for everything. So, quite a bit of this is done through, for our two projects that are, that we are doing, the parking lots. It's been a long day, sorry. For the, where we're doing the parking lots, we are using our sinking fund. So, we get annual sinking fund dollars. So, we're using our sinking fund for the two projects, for that, the one at Gardner and the one at Dwight Rich. So, good for them, brand-new parking lots this year. And then, for our Forest View and Guyer Park Elementary, for the upgrades to electrical, we are also using our sinking fund. So, that's to prep for both air conditioning that's going in at both of those schools and for solar panels that are going in. For our Mount Hope school furniture, that is completely bond use, with the exception of our very last DBI order that is on there, and that's for food service. We're using food service funds because that's all cafeteria furniture. So, we're able to use our food service funds for that and help supplement with that. And then, our Atwood cafeteria equipment is also being used fully out of our food service funds. And just to remind the board, we usually have an issue spending down our food service funds, so we're trying to spend as much as we can with that because we usually have too much. And then, the last one, that is our door for Patengill, that is still a change order that is coming out of that, if you guys remember, that the, that project was funded by both sinking fund, and then we use a little bit of fund, I call it the Shirley Funds, Fund 45. Sorry, I call it the Shirley Funds. I'm as from sale of former property. So, we use those two funding sources, and we had budgeted for a certain amount for our Patengill addition. We did not use all of that budget, so we're using some of the rest of that budget to then make this addition, to do this change order. So, we're not expending any more funds above and beyond what we had originally budgeted for. We're just tapping into some of those additional funds that we didn't have to spend that we thought we might have to.
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm going to go yes for the last time in these proposals until I have the report, how much money we have in the sinking fund, how much money we have in the other funds, and what kind of the projects we are going to have in the future, and has the projection on how economically the district is going to be on these funds. Then, I think I asked for that few weeks ago, but it's about time now. We need to know that we are spending all this money, we have a lot of money. We are in the business, and our business, you know, to make money, our business to educate kids, but this money, I need to know if what we are having, what will happen in the future, the week over. The, I think the board should be aware of all these funds. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes. Yes, Trustee Lopez.
Lopez. Thank you. I did ask that question at the meeting in terms of the sinking fund, and I think we still have like four years left, and that's eight million a year. So, those, they're about, you know, these are wrong figures. So, so with that, I know that we have some projects already that we've been using sinking funds like today. I think that as far as new projects, we have to get done with the projects we now have. But if you recall, there was a long list of repairs needed by the buildings, and then we still have Sheridan Road. I don't know how we're going to handle that, but that's, that's one that's pending. So, that's just from, from what I've seen. I don't know if Christina has any, any further information, because I don't think we have looked at any other projects besides the ones we now have, except this building that it got gutted and then we had to do it.
That was covered by insurance. We do have several other projects that are slated for the sinking fund this summer, and I'm happy to get a list of all of those together and what we're planning on spending. That's not an issue at all. We'll make sure that we get that together.
Alrighty.
So, if anybody has any questions on any of this bid request, ask, see if we can answer it. Yes, ma'am?
Now, who's going to regulate the meeting, me or you?
You. Well, I'm giving the report, by the way.
We had two trustees coming out. I said, "Hold up."
Trustee boy.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Just a really quick, quick question and then comment. I thoroughly enjoyed the bids and just reading through them, especially how you connected them to the strategic plan. One of the questions that I had for you is, we stated a couple of times that this is helping, oh goodness, it's helping with the district's mission in regard to upgrading facilities, but more so, it dealt with, you put a phrase in there that, oh, "Mission of providing educational excellence in a safe and nurturing environment." And so, I really appreciated that because it, it just helps to solidify why we're, we're even doing these things. But also, I wanted to say thank you for, I looked up the companies, and I like that American Asphalt is a family-owned company. That was like, I think, really important, and they have long-lasting reputation. And so, can you just talk a little bit about how you made some selections to some of, some of the companies that we chose?
Sure, absolutely. Happy to do that. So, the vast majority of the time as a district, when we're looking at however we're spending, whatever monies are made available to us, whether it be through a bond, sinking fund, general fund, whatever it may be, we have the responsibility of awarding the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, the contracts. So, we take that as very seriously. One of the things that we've done recently too is, if the board remembers, we adopted some things to add in the tri-county and local. So, we take that into consideration as well, and minority and female-owned. So, those are things that we do look at every time that we're making, going through the bid selection process. A few other things that we look through as well is history with the district, history with other school districts. So, when we're having these post-bid interviews with these companies, we have a, a whole list of questions that we ask all of the companies, of course, that are directly related to their project, but are also directly related to their past history in doing similar projects. There's also things like their rates of, you know, injuries on the job, like all different kinds of things that are super important. And so, sometimes you'll see, or a lot of the time, we will award the lowest bidders because a lot of the times, the companies that are bidding the work for us are responsive, responsible, are giving us everything that we need. And so, usually, we do end up going with the lowest. You also see sometimes we won't. And sometimes, that has to do with past performance history. Sometimes, if they're not able to provide the exact scope of what we need and ask for in the bid, and they want to provide an alternate that we're not okay with because that goes against the standardization across the district. So, we do take a lot into, a lot into consideration when we're having these selection processes. But a lot of the time, a lot of these companies come, I'll say, come correct with their bids, and they have everything in there. And so, you know, a lot of times, we do go with the lowest bidder, but it doesn't mean we don't, or, you know, we don't make a different decision sometimes.
Thank you for that. Last thing, I really appreciate, because I had the question on the request for change with Christman and what that, what that meant. And so, if I'm hearing you correctly, the request for change, just simply, we didn't spend this allotted money for a project, and because it's a certain amount over $50,000, we are now voting to take this amount and put it toward another project. Am I hearing that correctly?
Sure, and I'm happy to explain it a little bit further too. So, when, whenever we go into certain projects, I have the okay to approve a certain amount in a change order. The Superintendent then has an amount to approve, and anything over $50,000 then needs to come to the board because it's a very significant dollar amount. So, first and foremost, that's why it's coming to the board. Sometimes, when change orders like this come to the board, we are requesting additional funding. In this case, we don't have to. So, I'm not going to use exact numbers here, but let's say we projected a project for $5 million. It only cost us 4.5 million. Now, we have a $500,000 difference in there, and we are able to come in and do something a little bit additional to the project that we weren't originally planning on. So, it's a change order to the project, but we are using those available funds that we had already budgeted for. So, that's what this situation is. Thank you so much.
Alrighty. Any other questions? Trustee Williams?
I have a question regarding the, the Mount, the Mount Hope furniture, classroom, office, and cafeteria. It's a lot of people that were, can you tell us what each vendor's providing?
I can't off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get you, I think I have like a 16 to 18-page document, it might be a little bit bigger than that, that kind of specifies each of the furniture. For sure, I can tell you that DBI is doing both the cafeteria furniture and some of the office furniture and conference room furniture. Gear Up Sports, Gear Grid Corporation, you'll see those are a little bit smaller dollar amounts. Those are for equipment and furniture inside of the gymnasium. And then, Do EI, NBS, and Great Lakes Furniture are all combination of both the library furniture, our resource room furniture, and classroom furniture. So, we're getting bits and pieces from different ones based on what staff and students selected what they like most. So, we might be getting chairs from Great Lakes and tables from NBS and student, or teacher desks from, you know, Do EI. So, it's a blend of what they picked after we set up the room at Mount Hope for all of them to test out the different furniture.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Alright, no more questions? All in favor of the adoption of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to our action item, we discussed policy number 833, 8330, the directory information last week, and there is, the policy is also in your board packet this evening. May I have a motion?
Madam. Madam President.
You already did the consent.
I move that the Board of Education adopt policy 8330 as proposed.
Thank you, Trustee Kavanaugh.
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Thank you so much. All in favor signify, is there any discussion? No. Alrighty. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Eight zero. Yes, eight zero. Alrighty. Moving on to action item number B, the Michigan Association of School, Michigan Association for School Board 2025 election. You also have in your packet, our beloved trustee Guillermo Lopez is running for region number seven, which is a three-year term. His election statement is also in our packet this evening. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Oh, everybody's excited about you. I'm going to, who am I giving it to? I'll give it to Trustee Williams, because she, did, was you? Okay, okay, I'll give it to Trustee. Okay, okay, I'll give it to trustee Stroh.
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education cast its vote for trustee Guillermo Vice President Lopez in the M A S B twenty twenty-five election to elect members to the M A S B Board of Directors.
Alrighty. May I have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to trustee Boyer. Alrighty. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Motion passes, seven zero. Alrighty, it's amazing.
May I say something?
You know what? Yes.
Yes. Well, no, thank you very much for the support. You know, M A S B certainly is an important organization in the state of Michigan in terms of education quality and preparedness of school board members, right? So it's been a privilege serving there. I was first appointed, then I ran for the first time and got elected. And this is my second and probably last time to to bid for that position, if I get enough votes. But I do thank you for for your support here in this Board of Education. Gracias.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
I had been in several meetings with the Michigan Association of School Board, National Association of School Board. And the name of Mr. Guillermo Lopez came out in very good regard. I think they represent all of us very, very well. And I hope that he stayed there for many, many years.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. And I agree with you. When I first came on the board, I attended my first conference and you were there, and you do represent us well. So thank you for serving in that capacity. You wear a lot of hats.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alrighty, moving on to new business, and we don't have any new business at this time. Discussion items, we don't have any discussion items. Report from our secretary and announcements.
Yes, so on March fourteenth, we have a PD day, so there is no school. On March twenty-first, there is also no school. And our spring break is coming up from March twenty-fourth to March twenty-eight. And on February twenty-sixth, we have Parent University. The topic is navigating emotions. It'll be at six P M. at Patton Gill. And also on the twenty-sixth, we have PCAC. The topic is behavioral threat assessment and management at six P M. at twenty-four hundred Wainwright Avenue. And our next board meetings are March thirteenth, when we are having a regular board meeting. March twentieth, we have a regular board meeting and an ISS, informational study session. And April third, we have another regular board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items at this time? No? See, hello, everybody. Alrighty. Comments from our board members at this time? Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Madam President, board members, thank you very much. On the last meeting, February sixth, I was watching you working here from long, long distance from here. I'm really happy to see this new board member, new board room. And thank you to the workers and Christina and many others that were involved in having repairing this. Even we like to go to the school, that is our home. That is the school board home. And if this room represents something, it's not the physical aspect. It's the board education dedication for so many years. Just today, we had two and a half hours dedicated to education. And that is what this room represent. When I go to Washington, the CEO, I go to the Capitol, I go to see what the members or the representatives or the senators meet. And I know that chamber represents so much for our nation. And I hope they continue to be representing what they were there for and never change. Then this board, this room represent education in the Lansing School District. In the last four fifty-four years, I have known great board members. I'm not going to mention any because I'm afraid I went to miss many of them. And only we mentioned Mr. Guillermo Lopez, who is already twenty years. But this board, this board room represent the philosophy, the all the work done for so many years by the school board and the administration and the whole staff in Lansing community and education. I only want to mention one person, the is Gail Allen Klein. Could I quickly quietly, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, after a life on which she was anything but quiet? Were you talking about a board member here that can be talking and asking hard questions and all that? She was one of those. She was never quiet, but doesn't, she was coming to this attitude, but after that, she will be cooperating, working together, moving the district forward. And she was active as a P T I leader of her children's school and chaired the nineteen seventy-nine Millet's campaign that renewed funding for the school during a period of tax revolt. In nineteen eighty-one year, she was instrumental, nineteen eighty-one girl was elected to the Lansing Board of Education, serving for twelve years. She was instrumental in putting the first female principal in Lansing High School, Eastern High School, on Ms. Eleanor Dawson. Then I remember that. Then this place that we are here together is a sacred place. Not because look good, because what the job there for many years had been done here. And I hope that we continue to do it. Thank you, Madam President. Let's go to honor our own, oh, and by the celebration of African American math. I had here, I have a dream. Then we celebrate the Martin Luther King Day. The best commission maybe in the United States is in Lansing. Is in Lansing. Then Lansing has been always celebrating diversity, always and be proud of what you are and what Lansing represent, what Lansing School District is. Thank you to all of you. I am glad to come back in this cold weather. Thank you.
So glad to have you back. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Alrighty, any other, yes, trustee Boyer?
So I I would be remiss, even though I miss teaching this in my classroom, that giving acknowledgement to the creator of Negro History Week, that then turned into Negro History Month, that was then adopted into Black History Month. And if you do not know his name, you should. His name is Dr. Carter G. Woodson. And one of the reasons he created Negro History Week is because his professor in college at an Ivy League school said that Americans did not care about the function, nor the expectations, nor the contributions of African Americans in this country. And he set out to prove him wrong, and we are doing so greatly. But also, I hear often, why February? Why February? It's the shortest month. So in case you do not know, the reason he chose February is because Frederick Douglass was born and died in the month of February. And in order to honor his memory as an activist and abolitionist, he chose the month of February. So never let it be said it was chosen because it was a short month. It is to honor a hero in the history of America, and that is Frederick Douglass. Don't forget it, I'll quiz you next year.
Thank you educator slash trustee for the history lessons for all who don't know. Alrighty, trustee Williams, grace us with your presence.
Just a reminder, next Tuesday, Future Chef's National Challenge by Sedoco Magic is happening. Starting at four thirty to seven, it's going to be at Lansing School District Sexton High School. You all should come. It is so much fun. These kids are first grade, kindergartners through fifth graders, and they compete like top chefs. When I say they compete like top chefs, they do. I mean, to watch these kids cook, I'm like, I think I need to rethink my cooking abilities. Some days, last year's winner, she made this roast beef sandwich with her own aioli, and she was a fifth grader. Most people don't even know what an aioli is. So let's support our babies. I mean, they're doing it. And I mean, they're taking these things home to share with their families, too. So and I think they showed up on some of the menus at Sedoco as well in the school. So please, next Tuesday, let's show them some support.
Thank you, trustee Williams. This is a fun event to attend, I did attend before. Any other questions from our board members?
Did you say? I do, thank you. You know, obviously, we're celebrating Black History Month, which we should, and we have all the time. But just a little bit of history. The Trida Vidalgo was was signed in February second of eighteen something or other. And so that became Chicano History Week, the first week in February, February the second to the sixth, or whatever it is, February the second. So we we don't, sometimes we just forget, and sometimes we don't pay attention. But that is a significant event in in the history of the United States of America. And I think that we should make a point of acknowledging that every year. And maybe we can put it on our calendar, school calendar, so that we can also join in celebration of both the month-long Black History Month and the week of Chicano History Week. And and I'm proud to say that when Michigan passed that Chicano History Week in Michigan, our own Dr. Rodriguez was the one that presented the resolution at the State House. So if you would like to just share a little bit about it, Dr. Rodriguez, it was a fabulous day.
Thank you. History is is so great in this city and the nation. And ignoring each other is the worst thing we can do. Then appreciation for what we are, what we can be. The Chicano Week was celebrating that year for all Michigan and incredible activities in the Lansing School District for for years and years. I don't want to go over the Chicano Week because definitely February, we had to be aware, is African American Week. And my respect and honor to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Yes, teacher, educator.
I would love to end on a high note. In case you all did not know, probably not, we have a former Sexton grad who is a professional makeup artist. And her top client, who is a hip hop artist named Rhapsody, became a two-time Grammy winner this year. And our former graduate was there celebrating with her. So shout out to Kiara Lanis, who is an awesome, awesome woman in this city, a champion of the city, and recognizing her talents. It was on the main screen.
Who will beat your face for you if you know it's beat.
Absolutely.
Okay. Wonderful, though, but thank you for that high note. Lansing is amazing. Lansing School District is amazing. And we have amazing individuals that have came out of the Lansing School District, and we have amazing students that are coming out of the Lansing School District. So it is an honor to serve on this board. And with that being said, if there are no more comments from the board members, may we have a, no?
Just remember, March is Reading Month. We all have schools, please sign up to go read at your schools. I mean, we're talking about educating our students. This is one way we as board members can partake, going into our assigned schools or into any of the schools and reading to these babies. So just remember that. Say you sorry.
I'm sorry. And I don't even need to have a motion to adjourn. Meetings of the board meeting.